Good morning. For those of you joining us online via Zoom, we'll be preparing to launch the meeting shortly. Thank you.
I don't know if you all can hear me, but I can't hear anything on my end.
Good morning, Justin. Are you able to hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. The meeting is not quite yet started.
Okay, sounds good. And clerk, are we ready?
Yes, Chair, we're ready to begin.
Do we have the signal from Supervisor Cummings?
Yes.
I'd like to call the order, the December 9th, 2025 meeting with the San Luis County Board of Supervisors. Before we call roll call, I want to mention that Supervisor Cummings is ill today and will be attending remotely. Madam Clerk, we call roll call?
Certainly. Supervisor Koenig.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
And Supervisor De Sera.
Thank you. I'd like to see if any members of the board would like to dedicate today's moment of silence. We'll do a general moment of silence. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, I never heard such a well-done pledge of allegiance. I don't know if it's acoustics or everybody that's here today. I'd like to see if there's any conservations of late additions to the agenda or deletions to the consent agenda or regular agenda.
Yeah, we have additional materials for item 24, revised attachment, updated salary schedule for unrepresented, 4% COLA inequities. For today's agenda, packet pages 553 and 555 have been replaced.
Thank you. I'll turn over to the board, see if there's any items they'd like to remove from consent.
I'll move consent agenda.
Oh, no, no. Any items you'd like to see removed? See, none. We'll continue. I do have to read this statement regarding item number 24. This is my third version right here. Pursuant to the governmental code of sections 54953, I am announcing that this consent agenda includes item 24, which is an amendment to resolution number 279-75 to amend salary schedule for the unrepresented group, which includes local agencies, executives. This includes equity adjustments to raise the salaries of local agency executives, including county CEO, county council, and certain department heads, as described more fully in item 24. In addition, the recommendation by the Personnel Director and the County Executive Officer is to set off cost of living increases for the unrepresented groups, including local agency executives, over a three-year period annually, each December at 4% in 2025 and 2026, and 3.5 in 2027, similar to the cost of living increases provided other labor groups. Now we'll move on to public comment. Any person wishing to address us on the board on public comment for up to two minutes, or as limited by the Chair, speakers may comment once and must address an item in today's consent agenda, closed session, agenda, or a topic on the board's jurisdiction that's not on the agenda. The board will not take action or respond immediately to comments on non-agenda items, but may follow up individually or at a future meeting. Again, speakers will be given two minutes. Please form a line here in person who wish to speak to us at this time.
Good morning. I'm Bill Beecher from Aptos. This board has inherited a messy situation with the rail trail. Your predecessors kicked the can down the tracks for more than 20 years, and now you are following suit. This has to stop for three reasons. The regional transportation plan is flawed. Caltrans needs your decision in order to move ahead on Phase 3 of the highway widening, and Santa Cruz Metro has electric and hydrogen buses that have started running 20 years before the rail plan. The plan is flawed in several areas. It does not provide parking for La Selva, Aptos, and Capitola. Without these three, this plan fails miserably. The cost of the three parking structures and the land needed for those three areas would bankrupt the plan. Why was it omitted? It raises sales tax 12%. Thank you, Manu, for that number. Caltrans, Phase 3 calls for removing two railroad bridges over Highway 1 in Aptos. With your present plan, they will have to replace those bridges with freight-bearing ones, an expensive proposition. Tell Caltrans to remove the bridges but not replace them until you decide on the fate of the rail trail. This could save us taxpayers a lot of money. Santa Cruz Metro has acquired 57 hydrogen-fueled buses, and they are running as of this month. They also have electric buses that are now running. A Highway 1 widening project will be completed in the next several years, with these new buses promising the same 45-minute schedule between Santa Cruz and Watsonville. You were elected to make decisions. It's time that you do that. Anyone can play kick the can. At Hewlett Packard, I made many proposals. I would have been fired or demoted for a plan like this. The FTC members should be replaced as lacking the skills to do their job. They work for you and us. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Rob Young from Aptos. Thank you very much for your service to the residents of Santa Cruz counties, especially in resolving the contentious ongoing debate about what to do with the rail trail project. Many present supporters of the project refer back to the vote done many years ago for the rail and trail project and support today by the citizens of the county on justification to proceed. But in reality, the cost and magnitude of this project was not understood at that time. The information that we have now clarifies the cost of the development for the project as being four to eight times what the original discussed costs were, not including the additional needs for parking stations and unexpected engineering and building requirements for a rail system. I think it's time for us to go back to the citizens of Santa Cruz County and ask them if this is how they want to spend their critical limited funds and if they want more taxes levied for the operation of the rail. Let there be strong debate on all aspects of this project in the open. This includes the new information that we have at hand now. Let the taxpayers decide what they really want to do. Let democracy speak out. But you have an immediate issue that you need to address. What should the replacement overpasses in Phase 3 of CA-1 in Aptos be? Yes, this is Caltrans' money, but let's not waste it on something that is not needed. All tax money is our precious money, and we need to conserve it for what is needed for the entire Santa Cruz County. This is an issue that needs to be resolved now. Thanks very much.
Hi, I'm Keith McHenry, and I'm working with a number of community groups to call for a ban on all lithium storage facilities in Santa Cruz. We watched the draft ordinance meeting, and the Board of Supervisors voted to rehear that case in March, and magically the next day, without public input, it got moved to January. So something very corrupt is occurring there. As you probably know, that 55,000 pounds of heavy metals was found in a slew by study through San Jose State. And so that, I think, should wake people up that that's what would be happening if lithium battery facilities were placed in the county. That's why we're calling for a whole ban. And a number of our organizations have obtained lawyers to fight this in court to make sure this never happens in our community. My family was poisoned by the Moss Landing fire. Took months to recover, nearly over half a year. And so I'm going to read a little bit from one of the letters that you received from one of the attorneys that is representing the community against this, and that would be that the approval of the principal components of the draft best ordinance and amendments to the general plan before seeking public comment and conducting an environmental analysis pursuant to California Quality Act signals that the draft is a fait accompli, that the purpose is that you're just going to do this, that the public hearings and all of this is just a sham, just like the fact of you moving behind the scenes of the public the next review of the draft ordinance to January. When you publicly voted, and I watched all the way to the very end of that meeting, you never brought that up to bring it to January. So there seems some very dire corruption here in the Board of Supervisors.
Can we hear the applause? We have a lot of speakers, and I want to go through everybody unless we change the time for one minute. But let's hold the applause so the next speaker can go immediately after the previous speaker. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Carol Bjorn, and I'm also here to talk about the lithium battery energy storage facilities that are proposed for this county. We need to look at the entire process of putting in proposed lithium battery storage facilities. So what are the environmental impacts of just mining the lithium in the first place? So unfortunately, it's quite detrimental to the earth just to mine the lithium. For example, there's a lot of water depletion with the mining. Many lithium deposits are extracted from brine beneath salt flats, and just to produce one metric ton of lithium can require up to 500,000 gallons of water. Additionally, there's water pollution. Lithium extraction can contaminate nearby water sources with heavy metals, acids used during processing, and leaking brine and chemicals. Also, soil degradation and habitat loss can occur. For example, with open-pit lithium mining, it can remove large amounts of earth. The effects are landscape disruption, loss of vegetation, erosion, and habitat destruction. There's also a lot of air pollution with mining lithium. It can cause a lot of dust with heavy metals, emissions from the machinery, sulfur dioxide, and other pollutants if it's processed with sulfuric acid. Additionally, it's not carbon neutral at all. It uses a lot of carbon emissions. Lithium extraction and refining are energy-intensive, especially the hard rock mining. So there's incredible carbon footprint just to mine. And I'm not even talking about shipping it here. You have to think about that, too. There's a lot of cost and carbon footprint in shipping it here. Also, there's a huge impact on the indigenous communities. These lithium mines are often located on indigenous land, and there's a lot of human rights violations going on with regard to mining lithium. So I agree with Keith. I think we need a complete ban on any proposed lithium batteries in this county. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is David Brody. I'm the Executive Director of First Five Santa Cruz County. I'm here to thank Chair Hernandez and the entire board for recognizing and proclaiming January 2026 as the 14th Annual Positive Parenting Awareness Month in Santa Cruz County. My commission deeply appreciates your continued leadership in recognizing the importance of strong and supportive families in our county and your recognition of First Five and the Positive Parenting Program, or what we call Triple P, as a collaboration between First Five, several county agencies, local nonprofit partners, and many community members. More than 50,000 parents, young children, and youths have been served by Triple P since its inception in 2010, which is evidence that accessible proven supports for parents are in demand in our community and are making a real difference. This proclamation once again confirms our county's understandings of the importance of positive parenting and the fact that it is a powerful, powerful predictor of social, emotional, and physical health of our children. Positive Parenting Awareness Month is a reminder that everyone has a role to play, schools, service providers, employers, neighbors, and you all, in supporting parents and families, especially as this proclamation notes, many parents are feeling stressed, overwhelmed by economic pressures, food insecurity, housing challenges, and even immigration concerns. And so I want to thank you again, Chair Hernandez, and this entire board for recognizing January 2026 as Positive Parenting Awareness Month. Thank you.
My name is Lee Brokaw. I'm a member of Veterans for Peace. I wish to discuss the commodification of the Veterans Memorial Building. I've been part of the past 20 of the 35 years, veterans have been providing the community with both Thanksgiving and Christmas meals. These meals have been the cornerstone of the veterans' community's service to the citizens of Santa Cruz. Under the previous director, the hall was not open to us for Christmas. Steve Plesh, Friends of Thanksgiving, and myself, Veterans for Peace, found other venues, though we would have preferred the VMB. The past two Thanksgivings, Shakespeare Santa Cruz has purchased the hall for performance before and after Thanksgiving. The results are that we have not been able to set the hall up for Thanksgiving dinner Wednesday evening as we have for years. After the first time we requested Wednesday evening for our setup at the Noel Vale, we have been forced to come in at 7:00 a.m. on a Thanksgiving day to set up. That makes it unnecessary on a long day. Additionally, no respect is shown for the veterans, as we have to remove 150 or so folding chairs with row and seat numbers and replace them exactly as we found them. We've had to sweep up the floor for Shakespeare's confetti and popcorn before we set up. The Girl Scout volunteers who decorate the halls and tables are inconvenienced. We must now leave home Thanksgiving morning to help. The last straw is that the current director is apparently, according to his email December 5th, commodified the Christmas dinner to a woman unnamed who represents the Pipe Feathers Union of Santa Clara. The lady has funding and will use the VMB for her personal community meal. The problem I have is that the veterans, who for 35 years have been performing this tradition from solicitations and gifts in the community, apparently don't have the coin to compete with the commodification of the Veterans Hall. This is a sad day for veterans and the community of volunteers who've worked together for decades and frankly for the city. I'd like to thank Commissioner Martinez for serving potatoes, was it? Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Nina Audino, and I'm here representing the local grassroots group Stop Lithium Best. I hope to bring to your attention our attorney's letter dated November 17 that underscores the multiple ways this county's process for the best ordinance is both unlawful and poor public policy. Specifically, I'm referring to a lean tabor statement to you that the ordinance as currently drafted is not responsive to public safety or the community's unique siting needs and conditions. Our county's bid to place a best with 33 to 44 million pounds of flammable, toxic lithium batteries within a few hundred feet of dense working-class neighborhoods and amidst organic farmland began in 2019, when the developer first began to look for landowners willing to sell. By 2023, the county was conferencing with the developer. The public had no idea. By December 17, 2024, when the developers submitted their application for the best at 90 Minto Road, the public still had no idea. Seeing as the developer's single community meeting collected all of 20 people, at least half of them county staff and elected officials. And now lifelong environmentalists are lining up to make stunning claims about lithium fires that any scientist will tell you cannot be extinguished. Climate action leaders describe how water will rain down on the fire and put it out, how they don't care if there's a fire because for sure it's going to be a small fire. This is our Eden. As Supervisor Koenig, thank you, called it during the board's lengthy discussion about what most of you described as an incomplete ordinance on November 18. You made a decision to work until March to get it right, but less than 24 hours later, the county spokesperson told the local press that it was all okay the way it was, and a few tweaks would get it done two months faster by January 13. I think that COE Commissioner James Nakahara got closest to the truth of what we're creating here in our Eden. "We are choosing between two poisons," he said. "But why? Why choose any poison? And why cage ourselves into lithium zero-sum game where one community has to be sacrificed and bear the burden so another can gain?" We need to prioritize non-flammable battery technology, and the county needs to start by making a genuine effort to meet with companies who represent this option, not just with New Leaf Energy. Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Diane Denton, and I'm with Stop Lithium Best as well. And clean energy projects cannot come at the expense of public safety. Lithium is not a safe battery technology, and the county should not permit their use in bests. There are other technologies that can accomplish the state's objectives without placing people and property at risk. At the last Board of Supervisor meeting, environmental justice was spoken in terms of not shifting the burden onto another community where people already live with unhealthy environmental conditions, and that true fairness means shifting responsibility for clean energy transition while ensuring no community is left behind or sacrificed in the process. This all sounds well and good until it comes to describing what is being proposed in our county. In our case, lithium batteries are the burden, and Watsonville is the community where people already live with unhealthy environmental conditions. The rate of pediatric cancer in Santa Cruz County are the second highest of all counties in the state. The highest use of pesticides linked to childhood cancers is likely the likely contributor. A facility on Mina Road comes with the risk of fires, toxic fumes, and ash, and soil and water contamination, all of which can devastate our environment, our health, and the future of our community for generations to come. The Watsonville community knows this and doesn't want it. We also know that the sacrifice is not being shared by other communities in our county. Why take the risk when there are batteries that do not burn? That alone would lift the burden. Non-flammable batteries would also offer our county far more possibilities than lithium can. Because they don't burn, they can be placed next to substations where sensitive receptor setbacks previously prohibited them. Their physical footprint would be smaller, thus saving acres and acres of farmland. These modular battery systems then could become microgrids that can be placed throughout the county, building a resilience that would be better fit the distinct geographical locations of each district. These battery microgrids would put storage energy where it's needed and have it ready when it is needed. There would be no need to build expensive transmission lines.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning, everyone. My name is Christian. I'm in Santa Cruz, and I'm also with Stop Lithium Best in Santa Cruz County, and would like to reference the same attorney letter. So the rezoning and overlay of the properties adjacent to the existing electricity transmission substations could be considered illegal spot zoning. This is because the establishment of the overlay on these properties does not serve a legitimate public interest, does not bear a rational relationship to public welfare, and is inconsistent with comprehensive planning principles. Bests do not have to be located near existing electricity transmission substations. Such a location is a mere convenience to avoid the cost of constructing a transmission line that may have to be underground. Establishing overlays on these properties contradicts community safety, environmental justice, and compatibility objectives and concerns. The areas around these properties will be subject to the impacts without receiving any direct benefits. The ordinance needs to contemplate overlays in other areas that will not impact or place people and property at risk. In addition to the project application process, the EIR for the ordinance should evaluate noise electromagnetic field exposure, geological hazards, smoke, and drift studies, including a community risk assessment showing flammable and toxic extents for worst-case relief scenarios. Reduction in and conversion of agricultural resources and land, reduction in available open space and parkland, impacts to sensitive environmental areas, interference with emergency evacuation routes and centers, and surface and groundwater impacts to determine whether the proposed locations are appropriate. Once the zoning and overlays are established, it is too late to meaningfully consider the suitability of the project location. I really hope and pray that these do not go up in our county. Thank you for listening.
Good morning. I'm Gregory Audino. I'm continuing with the letter. The site development standards requiring minimum partial sizes, setbacks, or power pole heights will not prevent nor protect the public from lithium best fires. The county should not rely on SB 283 or the National Fire Protection Association Standard 855. SB 283 does not impose substantive requirements. The NFPA does not impose requirements to prevent thermal runaway. Lithium is inherently unstable. Lithium bests have a carbon footprint and cause other environmental impacts, such as water consumption, that need to be considered. There are environmental impacts and greenhouse gas emissions associated with raw material resource extraction, mining, manufacturing, transporting, and end-of-life recycling and disposal, which will travel through our county. The county should not be processing the 90 Minto Road project application at the same time as the ordinance development. The board needs to adopt an ordinance first and establish the criteria without the undue influence of this 90 Minto Road project. The 90 Minto Road project should not inform the ordinance. Rather, the ordinance informs the 90 Minto Road project. As it is our understanding that bests is not currently permitted by the county municipal code, the 90 Minto Road project application should have been rejected. The majority of people do not know what these best facilities contain. It is not like charging your electric car at 250 volts or 240, just like turning an oven on at home. It is charging at 1,500 volts at 400 amps. That is fast charging cubed. Merry Christmas to all of you, happy holidays, and we'll see you in the new year.
Good morning, supervisors. I am here. I'm Terrence Gipcannon. I'm the CEO.
I'm the CEO for Visit Santa Cruz County. I'm here to honor Carlos Palacios by giving him our first, the organization's first proclamation. So if you will bear with me. Whereas Carlos Palacios served the citizens of Watsonville and city government, including as a city manager for almost twenty years and whereas Carlos Palacios has served the county of Santa Cruz faithfully as a county administrator for over eight years and whereas Visit Santa Cruz County searched unsuccessfully for two years for the proper facility to house both its offices and visitor centers and whereas Mr. Palacios and the county assisted Visit Santa Cruz County into our current location in the McPherson Building in downtown Santa Cruz and whereas the county's new visitor center on Front Street is the county's first real visitor center. And whereas Mr. Palacios, in his role with the county, has championed the tourism industry as an economic driver for the county. And whereas Mr. Palacios and the county of Santa Cruz have shown great support for the tourism, marketing and management efforts of Visit Santa Cruz County. And whereas Carlos Palacios has chosen to retire this day, December ninth, two thousand twenty-five, now therefore I, Terrence Kincanon, CEO, do hereby proclaim Carlos Palacios the first honorary staff member of Visit Santa Cruz County worthy of wearing this fabulous fabulous BES. And we do that with our deepest thanks to Carlos and the county for all your help and to him is our warmest wishes for a peaceful and meaningful retirement. Thank you all and I'll leave this with you, Nicole.
Good morning. My name is Yessenia Gomez-Carrión and I'm the Triple P Program Manager with First Five Santa Cruz County. And as a parent myself, I know firsthand how meaningful it is when families feel supported, encouraged and connected. On behalf of First Five, I thank the board for proclaiming January twenty twenty-six as Positive Parenting Awareness Month in Santa Cruz County. This proclamation recognizes the vital role of parents and caregivers and emphasizes the value of evidence-based programs like Triple P, which gives families the practical tools they need to build strong bonds and help their children thrive. Over the past two years, with the support of grant funding dedicated to expanding Triple P, we've been able to deepen and broaden our countywide parenting support network. We've trained new partner organizations throughout Santa Cruz County, increasing the number of trusted spaces where families can receive Triple P from brief to in-depth parenting support. This expansion let us meet families where they are and support them in the trusted spaces they rely on. One of the most inspiring parts of this work has been training a cohort of promotoras, parents from our own communities who are monolingual or bilingual Spanish speakers and now certified to provide Triple P support. As trusted members of the community, they contribute expertise, empathy and a deep understanding of local families' strengths and needs. Triple P's motto is "Small changes make a big difference" and we've seen how true this is for families in our community. This Positive Parenting Awareness Month, we are proud to join partners across county to offer enriching family-focused events from library activities and resource fairs to our experiences, creating opportunities for families to learn and connect. Thank you to the board, First Five and all our partners for making a difference in the lives of families. Together, we're creating a stronger, more supportive community. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Justin Walker, Boulder Creek resident and disabled Army Infantry veteran who served this country. With my wife and two small children, we lost everything in the twenty twenty CZU fire. Our home at eleven ten Rambling Road was reduced to ash. I expected support from the county to rebuild. Instead, you've turned recovery into a nightmare of deliberated obstruction and bad faith. Public Works Director Matt Machado emailed me that CZU rebuild directive that was promised to all victims was no longer available to me. While approving identical nearby properties, former geologist Jeff Nolan trespassed on my property and land and harassed me and other fire victims. I have witnesses under David Reed, Matt Machado and County Administrative Officer Carlos Palacios, whom we recognize today for retirement. You oversaw a cleanup program charging on average one hundred thousand dollars per lot in FEMA funds while a majority of my block used private cleanup, which cost twenty thousand dollars. And the ones who used cleanup paid one hundred thousand dollars by the county. This is about a hundred thousand dollar overcharge per property, which wasted millions of dollars. You promised a FEMA buyback for me, then recorded a fraudulent hazard notice. While it was pending, I won the administrative hearing, proving no hazard, but you abandoned the buyback, leaving me with nothing. I've reached out repeatedly, speaking at meetings, but you've ignored me, including all supervisors and District Five's Monica Martinez, who never answered my calls. Carlos Palacios, as you retire, know your legacy includes failing veterans like me who sacrificed for this country. This isn't incompetence, it's malice. Only one hundred and sixty-one of the nine hundred homes have been rebuilt. That's an eighteen percent recovery rate. That's the worst in California's history and my lawsuit exposes it. I've hired lawyers. I've beaten you on unnecessary septic system requirements. I've hired lawyers and beat you and your staff on geology approvals. I've hired attorneys and beat you at administrative hearings. I've hired law firms and beat your demurors. I won't be quiet anymore, but now it's time for you guys to do something.
Thank you.
Morning supervisors. My name is Tracy Walker and I am also a CZU lightning complex fire victim. On August twentieth, twenty twenty, my family lost everything. This board promised we would go home quickly and easily. You created the CZU rebuild directive, fast-tracked permits and told us we were a priority and we believed you. Now, over five years later, I still pay full property taxes on a buildable lot I can't use because the county says the only way we can be approved to build is to do more geologic testing on private property that we cannot legally access. That is the very definition of a regulatory taking and it is due just compensation. I'm I'm sure the county council knows this and they're just stalling, hoping we don't. They have been stalling this case for over two years now. In August twenty twenty-two, we finally received our geologic preclearance. February twenty twenty-three, county staff trespassed during a rainstorm and unilaterally validated our report with no investigation. Then they attempted to record a notice of geologic hazard on our title, even though the state CGS report never mentioned our property. And after two administrative hearings, your own hearing officer ruled there's no evidence of a geologic hazard. Yet county council still blocks our permit, claiming there are other paths forward while refusing to identify them. Only nineteen or out of the nineteen homes on Rambling Road, eleven burned. Seven of those have permits. Four are fully rebuilt and occupied. Three more are under construction. The unburned house next door to us is less than seventy-five feet away from where our house once stood, sold last year with no hazard issues. So why are we the only ones being singled out? I'm not asking for special treatment. I'm asking for you to keep your word. Direct county council to settle my case and issue my permit. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kathleen Lynch. I live in Aptos. I'm also here with the local movement to stop the lithium BES facilities and ban them in Santa Cruz County forever. I was personally affected and by the toxic cloud from moss landing that landed on my property in Sea Cliff Beach to the point that I had sores all over my face that would not heal for months. I had severe breathing issues. I testified with sores on my face in front of the California Coastal Commission to my condition. And I'm obviously involved in a lawsuit against the moss landing issue for toxic poisoning. So I've already been there on this issue. As you all know, there are now companies that offer non-lithium battery storage options. The county has not met with those representatives and they deserve a full hearing. Your job is to protect us. And this is a beautiful county. It's paradise, actually. And it paradise has already been partially destroyed by the Moss Landing Fire. And it's your duty to protect us. It's your duty to talk to representatives from non-lithium battery storage companies. Why haven't you done that? So I'm asking you not to approve the draft ordinance or any other ordinance until you've had full meetings with representatives of non-lithium battery storage companies and and really do your duty as supervisors to protect us. I'd also like to once again highlight, oh, well, we're out of time. Thank you.
Board of Supervisors, county officials, community members and battle buddies, proud and steadfast. My name is Dave Ramos. Among many other things, I'm a United States Army veteran. First and foremost, I have to apologize for delivering misinformation about today's official board agenda. That was a result of miscommunications. Trust and integrity are paramount to all of us and I fully accept responsibility. I've taken actions to address the faulty information. I've worked in and around the Santa Cruz County Veterans Community for the better part of thirteen years and I have significant investment and participated in the operations of the Veteran Service Office. I stand before you today in strong advocacy of the Veteran Service Office and the Veteran Service Officer, the Veteran Service Representatives and the professionals that work in that office. There is a longstanding systemic issue that has recently increased in its managerial dysfunction above the Veteran Service Officer. As per Military and Veteran Code, the Veteran Service Office is to be run and managed by a veteran. Currently, there are three levels of non-veteran layers of leadership above the Veteran Service Officer. These non-veteran leaders are not empowering the Veteran Service Officer to fully conduct operations nor manage the staff in a way that truly benefits the veteran community. There are front-facing issues and public issues that the veteran community is feeling, including a restriction of service availability and discontinuation of resources and programs that are designed to benefit veterans. This non-veteran leadership is micromanaging the Veteran Service Officer to the extent that he is unavailable to his own veteran community. There are underlying personnel management issues that are diminishing the professional development and career progression of these highly effective and critical veteran service representatives. Those should be under investigation currently. I stand before you today with respectful insistence that you support the Veteran Service Office being extracted from its current leadership structure and given its own status as a standalone department. Myself and my veteran leadership team have met with the CEO recently and are exploring suggested solution strategies. I urge you to be open and receptive to supporting the Veteran Service Office community and subsequently the Veteran Service community in a way that gives the office the availability to be a force multiplier as opposed to a filtration system. All in support, please raise your hands. I look forward to future conversations. Thank you for your time and attention.
My name is Cheryl Ban and I'd like to suggest supporting the veterans, supporting the CZU fire victims and supporting the interim peace plan trail. I'd like to thank supervisors De Cerpa and Matt Koenig for voting for the peace trail. I am in support of that and not spending up to five billion dollars for a service of a train that won't even have the ridership that it's been claimed to have. But I'm really here also about the batteries and people in front of me have spoken very eloquently. My issue actually has to do with housing and the batteries. Our state is tying our local hands municipalities. We are not able to move with all of your voices, our supervisors, our council members. And hands are tied. That's called bullying. Our state is bullying us. We are in a dysfunctional relationship with our state. I would appreciate it if it was called out. I, the people from this dais, when it's happening, name it, speak it and call it. Otherwise, it's going to perpetrate. We are like in a huge dysfunctional situation and it's costing us in every direction. Housing, the batteries and back to the batteries. I don't like the idea that metals are floating around and landing in our lungs and they're our hospitals don't even know how to diagnose and treat us when we go in. We need help and we need it now and we need a moratorium on these batteries. Thank you very much.
Good morning and thank you, Board of Supervisors, for giving me the time to speak to you today. I'm Steve Fonda Carroll. I'm from Aptos, California. I am a thirty-year active-duty Army veteran, combat arms. I also spent ten additional years as an Army Program Manager overseas. Following that, I'm brought to the county. My experience as a VA-certified Veteran Service Representative at the national and the state level and I'm here in full one hundred percent support of the previous speaker on the Veteran Service Office here in the county. I'm not privy to the details of what was discussed with the county executive officer yesterday, but I will share with you my experience as a previous county DSO director. The difference between the human services clients we serve are that while families and children, aging and adult services and our eligibility folks are somewhat similar, they are different because the veteran community is a community and a population whose entitlements they have already earned. The only thing that separates veterans from those entitlements is a layer of bureaucracy that is very large and very complicated. And that's what the Veteran Service Office mission is, to work their way through that bureaucracy to get them the entitlements they need. One thing to consider is that the funding stream from my past experience to the county is on a ratio of three to one. In other words, the amount of money we put into supporting the DSO, if we count the funding stream that the county receives from the retroactive payments and the benefits these veterans are entitled to, the payback to the county is three to one.
Before we leave, can we get your name again?
Steve Fonda Carroll.
Okay, thank you.
Aptos, California. Thank you very much.
Good morning. I'm Cole Cameron. I'm the past chair of the Santa Clara County Veterans Commission. I work very closely with Steve, our Veteran Service Office, and it was good to hear some facts beyond the rumor I've heard over the hill of what's been going on over here. So I hope you're able to take some action in supporting our veterans who provide all the freedoms we have to do everything we want, whether some of us like what those things we're doing or not. Some ideas I have that's been helpful is, you know, we're blessed to have a retired commander as one of our supervisors on our county. So we have Otto Lee that's been very, very helpful. We bought some, we bought Tin Kirk, so we have specific veteran housing. So I know I don't think you have that here, but my my thought is can you at least give a few points to the veterans among the housing needs of everyone so that they get a little bit of an identification in that process? The funding for that, HUDVASH is one source. It doesn't require funding. As an old finance guy, I know every agency is tight. So, you know, the the money that these veterans receive from their disability readings helps the community, just like Steve said. HUDVASH is another source. The VA puts together beside housing, food. So would they have put together county by county, this is one for Santa Clara County. I have the VA outreach person that I'll connect with your outreach person at the DSO. That's one for Santa Cruz County. You have a great VOAD volunteer organization assisting in disasters that I've helped with ours as another resource. So I just want us to think broad of what the possibilities are that can support our veterans in getting them what they really deserve for what they've already given to us in their lives, their experiences. Thank you very much.
Can we hold the applause, please? We have a lot of speakers still to go through.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Mac Vorkalskylets. I've been before this esteemed body many times now and most times I've come up, my argument is centered around the fact that it's cheaper to fund preventative services than it is to defund them and wait for the consequences to hit. That it's cheaper to be kind than it is to be cruel. I'd like to think it's a decent argument, especially as it's one that is backed by the research, but I get that it can be a really hard pill to swallow when budgets are tight. At the end of the day, I come up here to plead for the county to pay for things, sometimes expensive things. I don't have to do that today. Your agency directors have decided to reduce hybrid work from home policy from three days to two. Why? The reasons they gave us were, well, talking about feeling lonely and trying to say it was a result of community feedback. Except the feedback they shared was the community being upset about the lab closure that we've been discussing over the last few months, a lab which has never had work from home. Meanwhile, the actual research, the thing that I care strongly about that's been done on the matter is quite clear. I've published an op-ed and look out this morning with all of the data, so I don't need to share it now. But the long and short of it is that hybrid work from home saves your workers' time, money, improves their physical and mental health and as a result, reduces quit rates by thirty-three percent. reduces quit rates by 33%. Those statistics are particularly higher for women, caregivers, and people with long commutes, like our union members living in Watsonville, Salinas, and Gilroy as a result of the high price of housing in Santa Cruz. Doing so keeps thousands of cars off our roads every day. It even increases productivity, assuming management knows what they're doing. And it does all of this while costing you nothing, not a cent. We've been up here many times before as a union, making the case that bad management is the reason we're in the budget hole we're in right now. Reducing work from home even by a day is bad management. It's your directors making impulsive sweeping decisions so they can claim they're doing something when all they're doing is making things worse. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Hernandt, and members of the board. I am Tricia Weber, the Santa Cruz County Clerk, registrar of voters, and I am here to speak on Item 17, the Statement of the Vote for the November 4th, 2025 election. We did certify the election per state rules last Tuesday. Santa Cruz County had a turnout of 61.3%, which is really awesome for a special election. Though the Secretary of State has until Friday to certify the statewide totals, it appears that we're well above the state average of 50% turnout, so our county really came out to voice their opinion. I'd like to thank the 14 wonderful people that I am honored to work with in the County Clerk Elections Department, the 20 extra help employees that answered our last-minute call. They pulled together in an election in 75 days, and they really helped the voters in Santa Cruz County have their voice. I'd also like to thank the locations that freed up space for us to have the voting locations on such short notice, and the 200 community members, including students who volunteered their time to work at those voting locations. It really does take a village to conduct an election. Now we pivot to the statewide primary election that's just 175 days away. Candidate filing opens next Friday. We're also working on some new voter education campaigns in preparation for the 2026 elections, including a partnership with the County Office of Education and the United Way to bring back the U.S. Civic Summit at the end of February. We are really, really excited about that. Stay tuned for more details and more details on much more of what we're going to do in 2026. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Becky Steinbrenner. I'm a resident of District 2. I want to say that I don't think at a time when there are people losing their jobs, upper management should be taking a 4% increase. And if you do, I think you should tie that to second harvest food. I want to make sure there's a correction for Consent Item 36. There is an error in your accepting Aptos Village Road. It is not Aptos Village Road. It is Aptos Creek Road, and that needs to be corrected before you take any action. I want to spend... I also want to say on item 15, the county's fire code, I ask that you not accept it because it is completely silent on the hazards of BES, Battery Energy Storage System, using lithium, and you are putting our fire responders at risk if you do not include something to protect their safety and the public safety in it. I note that other jurisdictions are still considering their fire codes, and that is deferred until December 16th. I want to spend the rest of my time talking with you about my disappointment in your allowing, especially the CEOs allowing New Leaf Energy, Mr. John Swift, to lead everybody by the nose on this Battery Energy Storage Ordinance. It was appalling to me on November 18th to hear CEO Coburn ask permission from Mr. Swift, New Leaf's consultant, for how we should proceed, a timeline, and it was brought out that in the next day that it was all changed, likely because of New Leaf. Please stand up for the people. Do not allow New Leaf to run the ship here and write our ordinance. It needs to be much stronger, protecting our public safety, our responders, preserving our agricultural land. Measure J made that very clear, and you need to stand up for it. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lorena Boskis, and I was a Veteran Services Representative for the County of Santa Cruz for 24 years. I had this speech in hand, but I'm going to try to wing it. I see how proud we were raising our hands to salute the American flag, yet, and also in addition, when we go to a veterans event or a memorial event, we're there for the men and women who sacrificed and died for this country. We, in the Veteran Services Office, we help and assist those families, those people who fought and died for this country and their children. Yet, our Veteran Services Office is being mismanaged and being tied down and restricted to offer those benefits to those veterans and the families. In my 24 years, all the people that worked in my office, we go above and beyond assisting those people because they deserve the best that we have for their sacrifices that they have done for this country. Yet, our office is being mismanaged and strangled, and they're preventing the ability to do the best and serve those veterans who we love and we serve. This program is run by people who have a passion for veterans, and what's amazing to me is that the previous VSO, a young combat Purple Heart veteran, was told and fired because he was told he was not a good fit. So he was fired. He sacrificed. He got wounded, yet he was not a good fit. He was loved by the veteran community, and the program, I mean, the people who fired him, you know, they should not be running this program. Thank you.
Good morning, and happy holiday season, and I want to thank all of the Board of Supervisors members who have in the past protected all of us and our environment to hopefully keep our paradise as it is, and hopefully you can continue to do that. I just want to say I love coming to these meetings because I learn a lot about what's going on in our community, and I actually served on the Civil Grand Jury for a whole year, learned more than you'd probably ever want to know about how the county actually functions. But all in all, I really feel like you all have been dedicated to your best ability and try to do your very best to help the community. So continue to do that. As a person who is the wife of a disabled veteran who got exposed to Agent Orange in Vietnam, I really want to support the veterans as much as they possibly can in our community because the help that he got, got his disability status put in place, and it's actually a miracle that he's alive with all the health anomalies that he actually got from Agent Orange and the exposure, and then showing up much, much later, which also brings me to one of the other things that I'm so adamant about, and that is, let's not poison our community with things that don't even show up for many, many years later. That Agent Orange exposure has showed up for a long time in my husband's help, and I really want you to look out for our interests in that regard. And again, don't let the commercial New Leaf company bully us into a solution. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jim Locas. I'm Livock resident, and a little bit of history. I learned to serve in 1962 at Inside Pleasure Point. Two years later, my older brother took me to Capitola, and that was my first revelation of this quaint village. There is a proposed four-story building into the village. I'm not sure why we want to do something like that, because if we start with one four-story, there's going to be another and another, and who's going to stop at four? It'll go to five because they'll say, well, what's one more story? The issue being is that we're going to turn this beautiful quaint village that we've all seen repeatedly into a downtown San Jose. So my plea to you is, let's not turn Capitola into San Jose. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Mark Carrera, and I am the Fire Chief with the Scotts Valley Fire Protection District, but I'm actually here today representing the Santa Cruz County Fire Chiefs Association. We did submit a letter regarding Item 7 on your agenda for today. We sent it last night. We hope it's in the packet, but I also wanted to come today and speak to it and be able to answer any questions when you get to that item, if you have them. We do support the project from an interoperability communication standpoint. We are firm believers that interoperable communication amongst our public safety agencies is key, but that cannot come at a cost that's being proposed right now. It has an adverse impact on our fire districts, roughly 8.5%. This project began about four years ago. I've only been representing the Fire Chiefs for the last two and a half years, but early on, the Fire Chiefs, from what I understand, advocated for a less expensive option, one that would be around $2 or $3 million versus $20 or $30 million. But what we were told was the need for this transition was because of law enforcement and law enforcement's need to encrypt their communications amongst their agencies. We understand that, but unfortunately, the cost shift that's going on with this project right now is about 20% to the fire districts, and the fire districts will actually be what's being called subscribers on this agreement, so we won't even have a say in the process as far as that goes. Although the goal with this project is for interoperable communication, it's likely going to lead, if this doesn't change, to actually dividing the fire agencies into two separate groups. The city fire departments will be on one communication system, and the fire districts will be on another. This is certainly not something we want to see. Our other concern is regarding coverage, making sure that the coverage, if we do agree to participate or it is cost feasible for us to do that, and identifying the coverage areas because currently where those gaps lie are in some of our most vulnerable parts of our community. Again, we support interoperable communications, but at the price tag right now, 8.5% of some of the smaller budgets in the fire districts, which equates to about, if I was to apply that same concept to the county, about an $80 million shortfall that you guys would need to solve, and I'll be here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Yes, hello. I am a resident of Livock, where it's like nursing home, Santa Cruz Post-Acute. And I already asked both Supervisors, Kimberly and Manu, for help for elderly that imprisoned at that facility, and I don't know why it takes so long to hear me out about it because the woman is 94 years old, and she is in clear mind, and she does not want to stay at that facility because she was horribly neglected over there. She was not even allowed to see a doctor at her request, like a dentist. They lied to her that she does not have insurance, and she losing whatever she gets, like it gets stolen from her, even like hearing aids or glasses, that she will not be able to read or to write. This is horrible abuse. It looks like human trafficking. Why that facility has so much power to imprison that woman and hold her? She tried to escape, and she ran into me because I live at the Capitola Road. I was walking at that time, and she begged me for help, and I found nobody who will get together with me and help that woman. And I think the people who can get together with me, first of all, Supervisors, because it has to stop. And Sheriff Department does not know the law or does not want to know the law, but it is in Constitution and in many also rules that the person, even if she is under the guardian, even if she has a conservator, and at that time, that female did not have any of them, but even if she has, she still has rights to choose where she can be. She has a house in Capitola, nice house, and she was thrown away from her house.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I hope you hear me.
Thank you. Excuse me. We can't get this thing to work right here?
Hello. My name is Jim Lorenzana. I live on Rodriguez Street in Livock area, 1300 to be specific. I've been living there since, well, it was beginning of what I'm here to speak about Item 35 on the agenda, the potential speed tables that are proposed to be placed on the road. I've been living there since my parents brought that property in 1961, '62, and almost continuously since that time. So I'm very, very aware of the situation on Rodriguez Street, and unfortunately, I think in order to get these tables placed, people that have started this have seriously overstated the situation on Rodriguez concerning traffic and speed. And yeah, it's true that people do speed on Rodriguez Street, just like they do everywhere else in Santa Cruz and California in the United States, and you name it. It seems like an overreach to put these tables in. It just seems totally unnecessary to me. I have another neighbor who wasn't able to put in any input on this because she was told she wasn't allowed to because she doesn't actually live on Rodriguez Street, even though she owns property there. Yet, the people who started this whole process, none of them actually live on Rodriguez Street. They live on side streets someplace, and yet they are allowed to start this whole entire process. It just seems a totally unfair situation. You also brought up about two incidents that happened on Rodriguez. One where the child was hit by a car. I don't know the circumstances. If speed was involved or who the child, it ran out in the traffic, I don't know. There was another one where a house was actually hit at the end of Paul Mini Road. That one I do know that was caused not by speed but by a medical emergency. So there again, it was misrepresented. I just hope you take this into consideration before you approve these tables. I just don't think they're necessary. Thank you.
If there's any other folks that would like to speak, please line up closer to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Mark Eskelbell. I'm a local, and I'm here on behalf of my cousin Teresa, who's currently in E-9 stationed in Anchorage, Alaska. She's in charge of keeping all of our F-Series fighters in tip-top shape. I'm also here on behalf of Lance Snead, Brigadier General, stationed out of South Carolina, and last but not least, my own father, who at 18 went to Vietnam, was stationed in San Juan Hill in Duckfoe. I'm going to read straight from Mr. Ramos's statement, which is backed by Mr. Cummings. "They want the bureaucracy to get out of the way and give them full oversight and autonomy." You guys should give them that. "They also want this item put on the next supervisor's meeting." You should give them that as well. "They also want the elimination of mismanagement eroding staff morale and efficacy." That statement there is very bothersome for anyone that's still enlisted in the military. All these folks behind me fought for our freedom and built this country. The gentleman that came up, that is a current veteran that can't get a permit from the CZU Fire, that's very disheartening, very disheartening. I think that as our elected officials, you can do better and you will do better. I fully support Mr. Ramos and all of the folks behind me that came to you today as your elected officials are asking you to do right by them and by the community. Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Xavier Bianchi. I'm the former VSO for Santa Cruz County, former veteran advocate. I also am part of a nonprofit here, co-founded Veteran Surf Alliance. I just want to enlighten you on a little bit of information. You've heard a lot of reasons and demands of why the Veteran Office should be its own or have its own self-determination, not under HSD. And a lot of, well, you may or may not know that men and women in that office do for not just our veterans, but our active-duty personnel, their dependents. In 2024, the information's out there in annual reports, CBSO Association, $9 million were awarded to veterans in this county in awards generated, new awards for that year. Now, I don't have to tell you to do the math, but you figure that out in tax dollars, what that means for this county. That's no small chunk of change. That's what those men and women in that office do every day for our veterans, their dependents, and why it is a unique position that serves the community. They are also granted, under Title 134 of the U.S. Code, as the sole authority and representative of the federal government on behalf of the Department of Veteran Affairs. So they are, for this county, the stop for the federal government. They have the authority to grant, to get funding. They also sit and represent, file policy at the state level and the federal level. I currently, I was working on with Monterey and San Luis Obispo County, Title SB 11234, to seek tax breaks for active-duty veterans and their dependents. These are the kind of things the VSO does on a daily basis, that they're not just some middle manager in an office that works under HSD. So we demand that that VSO with immediate effect be promoted to a program manager and given that title and answer to the director in the immediate effect, but you need to consider and we will not stop asking to be their own department. Thank you for your time and consideration. Have a very good day.
My name's Trevor Hutchison from Santa Cruz City Community. I'm here in support of Dave Ramos, our veteran community, and all organizations that currently have flourishing partnerships at the VMB, like Veterans Memorial Building downtown Santa Cruz, like Shakespeare Santa Cruz, which is a great partner of ours. The amount of great partnering in the community and output coming out of that building right now is extraordinary and it needs to be supported and embraced. And in doing so, you know, when Dave Ramos comes to the table with something that needs to be addressed, I just ask that you please give it the utmost attention, especially when it comes to the upkeep on the building. We have resources readily available. We just ask that you prioritize that building so that, you know, the heater, the plumbing issues, or anything that comes to the table, please help and give us support on that. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, how many people do we have online?
Could you please repeat that, Chair?
How many people do we have online?
If you'd like to speak remotely via Zoom, please take a moment to raise your hand at this time.
How many people is there?
Currently, we have three speakers online. Molly, your microphone is now available.
Hi, my name is Molly Daniels. I am also a veteran, a woman veteran and a single mom and community member participating in Veterans Benefits. Next week, I'm graduating after seven years with my undergrad as a disabled veteran in Collaborative Health and Human Services. Had it not been for Veterans Benefits, for Veterans Support with the VSO Office, with Work-Study Program, I would probably, me and my child, be homeless right now. So I want to support the VSO Office with, or having more support for veterans and better management of the VSO Office, having more veterans involved and continuing these programs promptly for veterans. Monterey County veteran populations are declining partially for this reason and especially for women veterans who are in additionally a vulnerable population within that veteran population, needing those supports and needing them now. You know, Veterans Day just passed and it's disheartening to see sometimes politicians come to these events and then virtue signal their support for veterans only on Veterans Day. But we really need to be mindful that every day, we need to be caring for the people who laid their life down for this country and thank you.
Erica, your microphone is now available.
Hello, my name is Erica Schwanbeck and I am speaking today as a Director of the Felton Fire Protection District Board regarding Agenda Item 7 for the Ring Radio System. The MSGA governance structure includes no special district representation as a voting member who operate, and those special districts operate on narrow budgets and have been repeatedly impacted by county financial decisions over the past three years, including but not limited to a 55% increase in auditor fees for payroll processing. This proposal aligns repayment obligations to special districts to navigate in three years when the fiscal year 26, 27 budgets are being set based on existing revenue and includes a note that agencies should seek grant or external funding, thereby competing amongst themselves for funding in a state undergoing its own significant budget impacts. Special district taxes are capped by Prop 13 and many districts, including my own, have sought out taxes on our own residents just to make ends meet. Additionally, there's concern that if UCSU requires its own subsystem due to topography, won't our San Lorenzo Valley Fire Districts and other unincorporated areas need that as well? Please listen to the respected chiefs from your local association who wrote in and spoke today and consider a more fair funding model. Thank you.
Call and user one, your microphone's now available.
Marilyn Garrett, I'm part of the campaign to halt lithium ion batteries in our county due to the toxicity and the contamination. I urge you to take the direction of the community members who urge you to prohibit this. In addition to the law firm of Aileen Tapper, the Central Water District Law Firm, I'm part of the Central Water District and Aptos sent you a letter writing on behalf of the Board's strong opposition to the proposed battery storage facility in Aptos, California, stating, "The proposed project presents an unacceptable risk to the health and safety of our customers and community." This letter serves as an official protest against the project. The district respectfully requests the County Board of Supervisors recheck the proposed project location. And I would say all project locations are hazardous. The only way to protect the public is to ban and prohibit these locations. As slavery was banned because it was so egregious, leaded gasoline was banned, it wasn't regulated. So protect the public, prohibit these from going in our county. And I want to refer you to the foghornexpress.com of May 8th titled, "From Farm to Fort: How Contamination in Moss Landing Threatens Every Dining Table." We don't need more toxic lead and other forever chemical contamination of our farmland. Thank you. Prohibit these from going in the county.
We have no further speakers online, Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to bring it back to the board, but before I do that, I want to say that both my Friday and today's agenda do have item 36 as Aptos Creek, not Aptos Village. I want to check in with our CAO. I didn't get any updates yet, but if she would have addressed some of the issues with the veterans.
Yeah, Chair Hernandez, I'm happy, I met yesterday with a group of the veterans, including Mr. Ramos, who was acting as a spokesperson for the group, and I think we had a really good conversation. I definitely learned a lot about their concerns and was able to convey some of clarifications around information that's being circulating in the community. One thing that was really important for me to clarify was just the Work-Study Program is still existing. It's important to know our VSO is new and he's still learning. Mr. Kaufman, Dean Kaufman, a former VSO, has offered to serve as a mentor for our new VSO, and so I think we're going to take him up on that. We also are interested in connecting our new VSO with the VSO in Napa County. They're a similar county to us. Our prior VSO was getting mentored by Santa Clara County, but they're much larger and it's, they have different needs in many ways than our community. And so Napa is a more like-sized, they're one of our comparison counties. They have similar communities that are more in line with us in terms of our outreach. And so they also, I think, are willing to mentor our VSO. We have a, we're going to have a professional development plan for that individual to help guide him in his growth. And he's still learning some of what, how the county operates and some of our structures and systems. But most immediately, I heard the need to elevate the VSO within the department, and so I instructed Randy Morris, our Director, to have the VSO report to the Division Director of Adult and Long-Term Care Services, Alicia Morales. That's a first step. And I need to further investigate kind of the root causes of the issues in the VSO to figure out what other sorts of changes might be necessary. So Mr. Ramos agreed to meet with me and Mr. Morris and Ms. Morales, and I'm hoping to schedule that meeting before Christmas to further discuss the issues. I think this is a good start and we're going to talk further, potentially do some more investigation and analysis of what's happening within the office and then hopefully come back to the Board with further recommendations or changes.
Thank you. I think that Monterey County would also be a good VSO's office to reach out to at some point for, you know, mentorship. With that, I'll bring it back to the Board to see if there's any items they have questions, comments about. Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everybody. I want to start off by thanking everybody who came to speak to us today on a variety of very important issues. We were certainly honored to hear from many veterans in our community, as well as be joined by many of them today. As you heard from CEO Coburn, we aren't going to be taking official action as a Board today. We aren't in a position to do that. However, I will be supporting CEO Coburn in her efforts to dig into these issues and to ensure that our veteran community continues to receive the support that they deserve. And so thank you for your service and thank you for being here.
Supervisor.
On the consent agenda today, I will be registering a no vote on item number 19, which is the cannabis business tax application, to be consistent with my prior vote on that on November 18th. On item number 13, which is accepting and filing the report on the declared local emergency related to food insecurity related to the federal government shutdown, I just want to again thank the Board, as well as county staff, for stepping up and trying to address this gap, approving up to $500,000 to support food emergency operations in our community during the federal shutdown. I'm very proud of this commitment, along with our partners such as Second Harvest, to be that backstop when SNAP benefits were frozen. And as the staff report indicates, we anticipate spending about $312,000 of that $500,000 commitment for the two and a half weeks of support that we provided to Second Harvest. I know that went a long way to support those who are vulnerable in our community and I'm just really grateful for that and thank you for the report back. On item number 34, which is related to deferring the access to medical care agreements with our health system partners, I want to support the work of the county, as well as our healthcare network, to take a pause and come back to us with newly negotiated agreements related to our healthcare network. So much has changed since the access to care agreements went into place many years ago, the Affordable Care Act, as well as changes related to HR1. And we recognize that there's going to be gaps in healthcare access moving forward and anything that our entire network can do to shore up resources, work together and collaborate in the ways that we always have, is something that I'm supportive of. So I'm looking forward to the report back on this item from staff in the new year and I'm supportive of this item as well. So that concludes my comments on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Supervisor Koenig.
Thank you, Chair. On item 19, which actually I believe is the approving $251,000 for design support for the main jail locker room renovation project, I just want to say I'm really happy to see this move forward. I had the opportunity to serve on a hiring retention panel with the Sheriff's Office, looking at retention for our correctional officers last year. And the issue of the locker rooms at the main jail repeatedly came up. And we currently have folks in this 1970s building who have locker rooms in shower stalls that prevents other people from showering, as well as just leads to generally cluttered environment. And obviously with the correctional officers, they're doing an extremely difficult job. And we are expecting them to treat folks who are incarcerated humanely, and I think in return, we need to make sure that they have good working conditions so that they feel taken care of as well. So I'm glad to see this moving forward and hope that ultimately we can find the money to actually do the renovations as well. On item 20, accepting the notice of completion for the Youth Crisis Center, Esperanza Adelante, just really excited to see this facility ultimately open up. It's a complete turnaround for the provision of youth mental health services in our community. Currently, we're, we have youth in crisis who've been receiving care in the halls of the emergency room at Dominican Hospital, or if they need longer-term care, facilities in other counties far away from their families. So having this dedicated facility where there'll be calm space for short-term care and long-term care that's close to families is really an amazing turnaround. We hope that the youth using your facility feel the same sense of turnaround in their own lives.
Thank you.
Just a couple, sorry, Chair, just a couple more items. Item 35, authorizing the installation of four speed tables on Rodriguez Street. Want to recognize the comment from a member of the public during public comment, but also thank Jeff Walker and neighbors for circulating this petition to install four speed bumps on Rodriguez Street. The application and the petition of affirmation did ultimately get 64% approval from residents and I think it demonstrates a strong degree of support. Also want to thank Tim Nguyen, who's been working with this Traffic Engineering Division to really get these applications moving a little bit faster. They're extremely important to the community and ultimately help neighbors make their streets safer. So appreciate all the work and public works. And one last item, I will provide some additional direction for when the time comes, is item 14. So this is the ordinance adopting the 2025 California Building Standards Code with local amendments. Since our first reading of this ordinance at our last meeting, I did have an opportunity to talk to a number of folks who are building housing in our community. And they raised a number of concerns and just how, I mean, there's over 50 pages worth of local amendments here to the California Building Code. And while I don't think any single one of them is impossible to work with, it sort of ends up being death by a thousand cuts and really adding cost to building housing in our community. So I understand that we can go back and remove the local amendments at any time in the future, whereas if we do not pass those local amendments now, it becomes more difficult to add them later. So given that, I'm going to support this item and suggest the additional direction that planning staff return no later than the second Board of Supervisors meeting in March with recommendations on which local amendments to the 2025 California Building Code are not absolutely necessary and can be eliminated.
Thank you. Before we move back to Supervisor Koenig, I want to bring it back to Supervisor Martinez.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I just want to clarify that my no vote is for item number 16. Sorry if I gave the sheriff a heart attack. I was not registering a no vote on your main jail improvements. Apologize for that. I had the wrong item noted.
So noted, Supervisor Martinez. Thank you.
All right, Supervisor Cummings. All right, Supervisor Cummings. Supervisor Cummings?
Thank you, Chair, and I just wanna thank everybody uh who's been able to attend today. Um, just a couple comments on some things that were brought up. Uh, one around uh development on the various jurisdictions. You know, I do just wanna emphasize to folks that a lot of the local control that local jurisdictions used to have overdevelopment has been stripped away from uh the state of California. And I just wanna urge people that, you know, should we believe that local jurisdictions should maintain some control? I think it's really worth emphasizing that to our state elected officials so that they can take that into consideration when they're voting on bills at the state level. Um, I know in Santa Cruz, we have an issue that's gonna be, come very controversial around a proposal to eliminate the catalyst, which is one of our biggest economic drivers in the downtown. And a lot of our ability to push back is really restricted due to um local control being removed. And so we're seeing that. We have a number of items on our agenda today. We're gonna have other items in the future related to this, and I think it's really important that we start pushing back against the state when possible. In terms of Veteran Services, I do just wanna um first thank all the folks who came out today uh to speak on Veteran Services. This has been something that has come to our board numerous times this year and wasn't something that came to this board in the past. And I really think it's important that we are doing everything within our capacity to understand the problems and issues that the veterans are facing and come up with uh solutions. Um, I haven't had, I was at the Veterans Day um event at the Vets Hall, um, where I met with Mr. Ramos. Uh, we talked about getting together to discuss this and I'll be meeting with him tomorrow. Um, and have already started working on a board item that I wanted to bring forward but didn't wanna do so until we had a chance to sit down. Uh, that item's gonna be very much aligned with uh what staff is proposing to do. But I do think it's really important that we, as a board, take action on this, uh, to provide that direction so the community sees that we are responding to their concerns as their representatives. As it pertains to the uh agenda, item number eighteen, this, I believe, is the wine improvement district. I'm gonna register an abstain vote, so I'm consistent with the previous vote that I had made on that item. Um, item number nineteen, really great to see these locker room improvements moving forward. Um, you know, in terms of our biggest assets, you know, for our county work and for us to be effective, we really need to make sure that uh the conditions for our employees are at uh the highest standard possible, so that people feel good about when they're coming to work. And these improvements from my experience, meeting with uh some of the sheriff's deputies and, and speaking with the sheriff, uh, are really gonna be helpful for building morale and making sure people have a clean environment uh when they're coming to work. Item number thirty-two, food insecurity. I just wanna thank the board uh for being supportive of the staff's recommendations on this. Uh, last week, um, many of us were at the California State Association of Counties Conference. Um, and at that conference, I sat on a board, uh, or a panel, I should say, where we uh discussed the approaches that different counties were taking it um to address food insecurity, especially during the federal shutdown. And one of the things that came out of that was that not all counties uh stood up and used their funds to provide assistance for families during that time. Um, and it varied depending on the different counties, but I think some folks really expressed gratitude and appreciation for learning what Santa Cruz was doing to help support people, knowing that moving forward, January thirtieth, we may see another shutdown and we may be in a similar situation. So um I just, again, wanna express my appreciation for the board and their support of this, and I think that other counties were able to learn from what we, we did uh during that time. And then lastly, I just, since this is, we can talk about items on the agenda, I did just wanna uh give another update from C S A C with the uh Local Government Coordination Committee to Stop Offshore Oil. I do just wanna let folks know that as of today, uh, Humboldt, Marin, Mendocino, Sonoma, San Mateo have all signed on to join our efforts. San Diego has an item on their agenda today to be heard. And then Monterey, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo, and L A counties have all made commitments to put items on their agenda, leaving only, oh, and Del Norte as well, leaving only San Francisco, Orange, and Ventura counties. Actually, no, my mistake, Ventura also said that they would put some, put an item on. So just wanted to highlight the, that this coalition to push against offshore oil and deep sea mining, um, is really um the momentum behind its building. And I just wanna thank the board for their support of this because I think that people have learned from Santa Cruz's leadership on this item, on this, on this effort. And, you know, sending a clear message from all the counties that we don't wanna see offshore development of oil and gas and deep sea mining facilities is really taking hold. And so look forward to providing more updates on that, as well as the coalition builds and things progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Cummings. Uh, Supervisor DeSerpah?
Thank you. Um, thank you again to everybody who spoke today, uh, in particular, our veterans community. Um, for many, many years, I worked in the hospital where I um helped uh people with very serious health conditions, who were veterans, who were not getting or receiving the benefits they were entitled to. I would call the VSO and typically Dean Kaufman would come to the bedside of that veteran and sign them up right then and there. I've also worked in Monterey County and that did not happen in Monterey County. So what I'm trying to say is that for years, we've had an amazing VSO program and uh I look forward to getting that back on track. I think when people feel appreciated in their jobs, they go the extra mile for our veterans. And I am so grateful to Dean Kaufman for coming back in to mentor our uh new VSO. Um, so thank you very much. And thank you, in particular, to our new CEO, Nicole Coburn, for reaching out to the veterans community and meeting with them. I think that was a, a really important step to sort of healing the issues in that office. Um, so thank you, everybody who spoke out today. Um, like Monica Martinez, I will be um registering a no vote, um, aligning with my earlier vote on the cannabis business tax as item number sixteen. Um, item fourteen, I stand with Manu. You know, I talked to a few contractors about the amendments um to the building code, the local amendments to the building code, and some of the things there are just um, it seems to just actually create more barriers. So we, so I, I would like to give a little direction. If our staff could go to this, I think we have a stakeholder group of contractors. I'd like the, that stakeholder group to look over the local amendments, if they haven't already, and provide feedback. Manu and I are both actually asking our own um contacts in our districts um to do the same, and so we'll, we'll be providing those to CDI. Um, I also wanna thank um CDI for their work. Um, item thirty-nine, Valencia Road Storm Damage Repair. It looks like it's going out for um, for a proposal, and I'm super excited about that. Thank you so much. Item forty-two, uh, again, an R F P for Phase Two of the highway widening and the SoCal corridor improvements, State Park to Freedom. Um, I thank Supervisor Koenig for putting forth, putting in his road money with my road money so that we could provide a match for that project, and I, I really appreciate that. Um, and I, finally, item forty-four, thank you to the Parks Department for going after the grant for Pinto Lake. Um, we really wanna clean up that lake and improve the water quality there for the animals and wildlife, so I appreciate you guys going after that. And I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor DeSerpah. So I would like to also thank all the veterans that came here today and spoke up. I know that there's still a lot I wanna do. I've met with department heads, but I wanna meet with our CEO. And most importantly, I wanna meet with our veterans, um, to get their input as well. Um, I think there is gonna be some change. You know, we don't have it on the agenda today, but we will have a series of discussions to, to resolve this is, these issues. Uh, so again, thank you for being here. I only wanted to talk on two items. Uh, number one, uh, the wine eighteen, uh, the wine district. I'm looking forward to that. I'm gonna thank also Supervisor Koenig, and I will have to welcome in Supervisor DeSerpah on this one. Um, and also, uh, item number forty-four, the Pino Lake. You know, we've been, we've had a, uh, it's been years that, that people haven't been able to swim. When I was young, we used to be able to swim there. There's been a series of algae that has contaminated uh the lake, where even dogs pass away if they jump in there and swim in, swim in the water. So there's a, it's all from uh contaminants, right, from agriculture, uh, that lead to this blue algae. But hopefully, we can get this grant and, and clean up that, that lake and make it fishable again, other than the carp, right? And make it fishable again and be able to jump in there with boats and have a, make it a, a destination again. So thank you with that. With that, I'll bring it back to the board, uh, to move this item.
I'll uh move approval of the consent agenda with additional direction on item fourteen for planning staff to return no later in the second Board of Supervisors meeting in March with recommendations on which local amendments to the twenty twenty-five Building Code are not absolutely necessary and can be eliminated, including feedback from our planning stakeholder group.
Second?
We have a motion in a second, but I do want to remind, we do have a registered no vote from Supervisor DeSerpah on number sixteen and not number nineteen, uh, and Supervisor Martinez as well. Madam Clerk?
So noted. Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye, and I have the abstention on eighteen.
DeSerpah?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously with three registered no votes on eighteen and sixteen. Next item we have, we're moving on to the regular agenda. Before we move out to the regular agenda, I do wanna note that we do have a scheduled item at one thirty. Uh, with that, the next agenda item is number seven, consider approving system sales agreement with E F Johnson Company in the amount not to exceed twenty-eight million four hundred forty-seven thousand seven hundred forty-eight for regional interoperable next generation ring radio systems. Approve the ring radio system master service and governance agreement with regional partner agencies. Adopt resolution approving the form and authorizing the execution of certain lease finance documents in the amount not to exceed twenty million for financing the acquisition of radio equipment and takeout related actions. I'll turn it over to Elisa Benson, Assistant County Executive Officer, and Tammy Weigel, uh, Director of Information Services Department, and Jim Frawley, Ring Lead Consultant, and Ryan, Ryan Freydek, Senior Administrative Analyst for the presentation.
And there it is. There's that bright green light. Good morning, everyone. We are very excited to be here today, bringing forward to you uh our comprehensive recommendation to really initiate a, a new day in critical communications infrastructure for our first responders and many, many of our government workers who do fieldwork. So uh, as the Chair mentioned, uh, we uh have our team here today, Ryan, Tammy, and Jim Frawley. We also have representatives uh from the sheriff and many of the partners who have been working with us really diligently since spring twenty twenty-three to move forward on this important project. Okay, I'm gonna be tilting my head a little bit so I can see. Uh, so very quickly, let's go to the next slide, Ryan. Our, before you today is really a three-part decision. It will uh set forth the master service and governance agreement to establish this regional radio system that we now very um comfortably call Ring, our regional interoperable next generation radio system. It also approves our sales agreement and contract with E F Johnson, K B C Kenwood, to build the ring radio system. And it approves the uh master equipment leasing finance uh mechanism we have secured at very competitive interest rates to fund the building of this system. I mentioned our team. I just wanna really quickly, because this is a complex set of decisions, we have a multiple part uh presentation for you today. An overview of this, the proposed system itself, an overview of the master service and governance agreement, the contract, and then the financing mechanism and next steps. So there are many pieces to this decision today, and we wanna make sure that it is thoroughly and transparently communicated, um, given the complexity of starting off a new day in radio communications. Next slide. We will, we can just keep going, Ryan, thanks. We will be doing a little bit of handing o- off the mic, cuz we have a variety of team experts to speak today. I just really wanted to have the opportunity to describe the ring radio system. And because this is really, it really is a new day. On this uh left side of the screen, you have the next gen radio upgrade in that lovely turquoise color. This is actually the communications infrastructure we're talking about to build a regional interoperable next generation digital system that meets a, a sub significantly higher level of coverage and performance than our current system. It meets modern encryption requirements and so much more. So just, that's the side of this that's really the, the tech, the hardware, obviously critical part of it. But the other side of it, the green side, is that now we will have an actual governance system for how we run this vital communications infrastructure that up until this date, we have not had. It has been a patchwork of user groups at best, different contracts, different understandings, different prices. So we are moving towards a totally modern approach to providing vital communications infrastructure. And we've been working on this approach with our partners for the last eighteen-plus months. So in, within that master service agreement, you're gonna see the governance structure itself, including how that executive member team will function as the advisory group to the operations of this system, as well as the budget and the cost allocation models. It will also uh has all of the roles and responsibilities around maintenance and, and and various operational items moving forward. And that's where a lot of the decision uh making, advisory decision-making will sit and then come to the board for a final, final um, final approval. And the team will go into that. It also, this is where we will be revamping our radio operations to serve a new system in the future. But with that, I'm gonna pass it to Tammy to talk about what are we, what is the, the the gain and where we're going.
So before I go into the Tammy Weigel, um, I S D Director, before I go into the ring overview, um, our current state of our system is, it is outdated. It contains a bunch of unconnected siloed uh radio communications that are each held by the cities, the county, and our, some of our regional partners. There isn't a lot of interoperability. Um, it also doesn't meet uh the needs for coverage and reliability, as we've seen over the last couple of years. So this is a really important project. I would consider this the most important communications project that we have undergone at the county in my entire career. So the ring um is a digital uh radio communications platform. It is modern. It will serve as the unified communication platform for our public safety partners, for the municipal services, our regional partners, which includes U C S C and county services. Um, so the primary objectives that we are really seeking within this project are enhance interoperability and mutual aid. It is something that really came out of some of the events that happened uh in our county in twenty twenty. It also uh meets the Department of Justice, Cal, uh, Cal D O J's encryption requirements that we need, will need to meet for our law enforcement partners. Um, it also provides additional coverage. Built into the R F P itself was a ninety-five percent coverage on street, and this will fix some of the key areas where we have had coverage issues in the past, um, including, uh, for instance, um, old San Jose Road Corridor, which has been problematic um since I started in this position. Um, it also is going to address reliability, um, and meets our future needs uh for radio communications. So we are not building a system for today, we are building a system for the future. Excellent, please. So just to kind of um go over what our work to date has been, uh, back in twenty twenty-two, uh, we were approached by the Fire District and the Sheriff's Office to do a, a complete assessment of our system and propose a um interoperable P twenty-five system to replace it. Um, that led to um the development of an R F P. So we worked with all of our law, uh, fire, regional partners, including the county and U C S C, to develop a system technical requirements and project scope to be able to release an R F P for a new system. So the um R F P was released in twenty twenty-four. This took several months. And then as, as this was occurring, um, we also looked at the current system, realizing that we were going to have to keep this system up and running for three years while the new system was going to be deployed. Uh, the county invested nine hundred thousand dollars in actual system stabilization of the current system so that it could be, remain it could remain reliable for our public safety partners. We also worked with our partners to develop a regional governance framework, which we will get into later in this presentation, developed a funding plan and cost allocation model, which brings us to today, which is the presentation to the board and approve the governance agreement, award contract, and approve the project financing.
All right. Good morning, Board. Jim Frawley, retired fire chief from the City of Santa Cruz, as well as the lead consultant for this project. So I'm here to explain to you the master service and governance agreement, what we call the MSGA. It is a contract or an agreement amongst the founding six members, which include the county, four cities of Santa Cruz, Watsonville, Capitola, as well as Scotts Valley, and the University of Santa Cruz. This initial agreement is how they, these members are going to be, will collectively share in the governance authority, operational responsibilities, and long-term financial obligations for this network. I was brought in specifically to assist in developing this governance structure because for something that's this big and complex, you really need to have a body or some sort of group that oversees all of the different aspects, whether it's radio operations, whether it's user experience, whether it's the financial piece. And so because of my experience building two of these systems down in the LA area when I was a firefighter and fire chief down there, I came up and had the unique opportunity to be able to do this here in my home county as well. I do want to say that to date, several of the member agencies have already taken action, actually four of the six. So the City of Santa Cruz on November 18th, the City of Scotts Valley on November 19th, City of Watsonville on December 2nd, as well as UCSC has given us their official participation in the agreement. Those elected bodies in the university have already agreed to and will be entering into the master service and governance agreement. The City of Capitola will be doing that on Thursday, and that was due primarily because of scheduling issues, as you know, the holidays pose a different schedule for the elected bodies. So what is the MSGA? Well, it is that foundational framework in which we're going to be able to govern the system, be able to make decisions, policy decisions, protocols, as well as adjust the service delivery as needed. Under the MSGA, the members will retain ownership of their actual owned assets, so infrastructure, tower sites, things like that. The radio equipment that will be attached to it will be part of the Ring system. And so what we wanted to do is the members either have frequencies or actual infrastructure that they're bringing to the table that are going to be part of the system. And in order to make sure that everybody shares and has, brings their equipment properly, that's why we put together this MSGA. How the governance is going to work is represented by the pyramid here. It's basically going to be a three-tier governance structure that's comprised of the executive committee at the top, which is a representative from each of the member agencies. So there'll be six representatives on the executive committee, supported by the technical advisory group, which brings the technical expertise on the tag. We have membership from each of the member agencies, as well as the police or the law chiefs and fire chiefs from the County of Santa Cruz. And then really, the foundational piece of this pyramid is the regional user group, because it's all about how the system operates on the ground at the user level. And as Tammy had mentioned, one of the key aspects of this was having significant service coverage area, as well as reliability in the system. And so each of the agencies, anybody who's connected to this system will have a member who is a representative on the user group, so that we can get direct feedback as to how the system is operating for everybody throughout the entire county. So both of these advisor groups, the tag and the rug, ensure that operational and technical needs are fully integrated into the system planning, as well as the governance decision. And now I will hand it off to Ryan.
Actually, before we do that, Ryan, I just want to mention one thing for the Board and the public. This is as close to getting a JPA without it being a JPA. And I just want to mention that we have had several member agencies, several of our key partners, sort of early, the earlier this fall, indicate that they would like us to consider that conversion in the future. So I just, this comes up sometimes, I'm just nipping it in the bud. We are very open to that, and of course, that would be another action by all of the legislative bodies, but I just wanted to point that out there before we move to some of the cost allocation work that Ryan's going to talk about.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, so a key provision, or maybe the key provision of the MSGA is crafting a cost allocation model to collectively share in the financial responsibility of supporting the whole system. Working with our partners, the MSGA utilizes a device-based fee model. Each agency pays proportionally to the number of subscriber units or radios connecting to the system, tying cost responsibility to connectivity. We divide it really into two types of fees. Firstly, it's a capital fee, which supports funding the capital upgrades that we're talking about today and related debt services. This fee is applied to executive member agencies only. The operational fee funds ongoing support, maintenance, and administration of the Ring system, which would be tied proportionally to the Ring's annual budget every year. And this fee would be applied to both member agencies, as well as our subscriber groups. There'll be an annual true-up process every year to get the device count or number of radios corrected to make sure that every agency's proportionality is up to date and current. This model ensures proportionality, predictable budgeting, and clear audibility, and it really aligns the nexus of the investment that we're making to the connectivity into the system. When we see this allocation in action, we wanted to show you the rough order magnitude of the proportionality for our different agencies. When looking at the capital fee, we can see that the county takes up about 62% of all the capital fees coming to, coming into the system. That number supports our sheriff's department, our Public Works, road crews, our DA inspectors, probation officers, and other county operations. When you look at the member subscriber agencies, who would be responsible for looking at the operations and maintenance of the system, the executive member groups maintain about 80% of the system, all our subscribers bear about 20% of the overall operating costs. And with that, I want to pass it back over to Tammy to talk a little bit more about the system itself.
So the RFP was, excuse me, the RFP was evaluated by, the results by a committee that was made up by law, fire, SCR 911, county representatives. And so the RFP was awarded to EF Johnson, which is a KVC, JVC Kenwood system. After several months of negotiation, the final contract was $28 million. That's split into two parts. One is the actual system itself, which is 18.5. That includes the main VHF system, which includes UCSC PD and all the law enforcement. Also includes the UCSC 800 megahertz campus system. They went in with us on this project to be able to get some cost savings, as well as interoperability, and also the system software and engineering. The ONM is 9.5 million, which includes the warranties, service support, and really importantly, a system refresh around year seven, eight, which will extend the life of the system by another decade. So we will not be looking at this decision for some time of having to completely overhaul the system. So that's a very important consideration within this contract. The upgrade itself has three phases. Phase one is the dispatch consoles and microwave. This also includes the final engineering that was mentioned in the board report. These are system improvements that are not only going to be critical for the new system, but also will improve the current communication backbone, as well as dispatch for all the agencies. Phase two is the radio infrastructure deployment. This is the actual installation of the system. We anticipate, again, this is going to take approximately two years to complete. And then phase three, which will end sometime between July 2028 and December, is the final testing, cutover, and acceptance. This will be extensive testing with our regional partners to ensure that when the system goes live, it meets all, everyone's needs and requirements. So the total Ring, again, system is, sales agreement is 18.5 million. We were able to negotiate a 10.2 million vendor discount off the top of that 18.5 million. So we also, EF Johnson is giving us a 40% discount on all radios that need to be purchased to replace, to work with the system. UCSC is going to be covering the 2.7 million for their 800-megahertz subsystem. And then the remaining 15.8 million will be allocated across the Ring member agencies. And as you can see on the chart, is the actual breakdown of the discounts, as well as the one-time cash and the contribution by UCSC for their 800-megahertz system.
All right, we just wanted to double tap a little bit on, this is a bit of a complexity within the project around being, Ring being an umbrella for both the VHF, which stands for very high frequency, I wish it was a better acronym, but very high-frequency radio system that is the regional system for Ring, as well as the 800-megahertz, we call it a subsystem, that is specific for the university. So the VHF system is the core system used by the sheriff, local police, Public Works, regional responders, fires as well. While the 800 subsystem is a standalone but fully interoperable system that meets the unique needs for UCSC and their campus operations. UCSC's investments improves the overall capacity of coverage by integrating its infrastructure with the regional network, while achieving cost efficiencies through the economies of scale by being a part of this larger RFP. As Tammy mentioned, the total post-discount capital outlay for the entire Ring system is 18.5 million, and UCSC is, will be responsible for the debt service and related payments and cash upfront related to the 800-megahertz system. What you see on the screen here is a projection of how that split would take place, so it really helps bring down our debt service needs every year. Speaking of debt service, I want to switch gears and talk about really the third major action in today's item, which is the master lease equipment financing strategy that we're pursuing to help pay for the capital dollars needed to fund the project. A master service lease agreement is a financing tool used by governments to purchase major equipment, in this case, our radio infrastructure, whilst putting the cost over time. Unlike traditional bond financing, lease equipment financing is able to use the equipment itself as collateral, not needing to use county buildings or other general fund assets to obtain the debt financing. The county pays lease payments over the term related to the expected useful life of the equipment, and begins those debt service payments only after the equipment is obtained and deployed. Because the system is going to take two and a half to three years to build, the lease equipment financing costs nothing during construction of the system and defers debt service payments until the system is operational. This aligns the payments that are needed with the actual system as it provides value. And it avoids using county assets and facilities as collateral and preserves our borrowing capacity for other projects. We obtained these numbers by working with our financial advisor, Suzanne Harold, who's here in the audience today, and our placement agent to develop the terms and bid for a financing of, for this project. The county received multiple bids, I believe there was 10 overall, which was actually pretty high for a project of this type. JP Morgan Chase was selected based on their low interest rates, low cost issuances, and favorable terms. The terms of the financing are an interest rate of about 3.86%, capitalized for three years, and then repaid over 10. Annual debt service is projected to be about 2.26 million, and again, split between the Ring members and UCSC. The total lease financing amount that we're asking the authority for within the resolution before the board today is 20 million, but the actual use today is 16.9 for the capital equipment. This approach really helps because we do not have to begin payments until at least fiscal year 2029. As the system comes online, spreads out our one-time regional costs over a decade and allows Ring agencies to plan ahead and really integrate these costs into future budgets. As we begin to wrap up today's presentation, I want to bring it back, we've seen a lot of really large dizzying numbers here. And I want to show that, how the cost allocation through the MSGA, if we were to fast-forward to 2030 when Ring is operational. We can project a total fee of about $202 per radio per month for this critical public safety infrastructure, including both the capital and operation, operational costs. That $202 per user per month ensures that we have a critical public safety infrastructure that is leaps ahead in reliability, interoperability, and security. I'll pass that back to you, Elisa, too.
Great. So with that, Board, I wanted to quickly talk about some next steps, depending on your actions today. Once these multiple agreements are approved, we would be moving quickly into contract execution and the next steps in design and that phase one work that Tammy spoke to. We will then also move in full force into the subscriber agreement piece that is not yet laid out as part of this agreement, but implied within the overall structure. And working through that question of the connection, the connection fee piece of that subscriber agreement as well. And we'll continue to be, of course, refining, or refining cost elements for the future operating and maintenance, as well as the capital cost. As we've described, we have a three-year runway for that work, so we think there is sufficient time to work through outstanding questions in that regard. Probably more importantly, we have spoken with every partner, whether they're an executive member or a subscriber, about our collective regional need to look at grants earmarks to bring the cost of this new technology down for all user groups. This is a commitment we've made, and we know as a region, our power in asking for that support, be it from the state or from the feds, is really strengthened. And we look forward to doing that work with our partners as we've committed throughout the fall. And that's what is spoken to in the master service agreement, that we are all working together to bring the cost down for all users. We've talked about, and I should say one more thing, if there is collective support across the region for looking at a different revenue measure to support this, I think that all elected bodies would be open to those conversations. So aside from one-time support, there may be other mechanisms that we could look at to bring down the costs of this critical system for all users. There is going to be a phased build out, as we spoke to, we've made some very critical investments as approved by the board in stabilizing the current system, but we do think some of them, microwave and console replacements that will go in, in the first phase, will bring increased performance quite quickly. And then last, you know, we hope to all be doing a ribbon cutting, hopefully before our IT director retires, because I know this is a legacy project for her. So with that, we have in front of you the recommended actions. I know we want to respond to your questions and, of course, take public comments. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to present this body of work today.
Thank you all for the thorough presentation today. I'd like to see if anybody from the public would like to address us on this item?
Yeah, good morning, Chair. Good morning, Board. Chris Clark.
Chris Clark, Sheriff, Coroner. I just first want to just give my thanks and appreciation to Carlos Placios, the CEO's office, and Nicole Coburn and her team, as well as Tammy and our ISD department for taking what is really a very, very important, critical issue to heart, really doing a lot of due diligence to get us where we are today. We, at the sheriff's office, I think I speak for all of my public safety partners, we know firsthand just how important this system is. We saw that in 2020 with the murder of our Sergeant Damon Guttweller, as well as the many storms and disasters that we had to work collaboratively on, and the challenges that we have with regards to being able to communicate, just how essential being able to coordinate and speak to one another in real time, just how important that is. And so I just want to say thanks again to the CEO's office, and I look forward to continued collaboration on this item, and I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Good morning, again. Mark Crera, representing the Fire Chiefs for Santa Cruz County Association. Just really quickly on this topic, I do want to recognize Jim Fraley for his work on this project. I'm pretty sure we wouldn't be this far without his effort, but I do want to say that one downside to how this whole thing came about was the fact that the fire districts were excluded from a lot of this conversation. Notice this parent-child, for lack of a better term, relationship with the member services agreement and the subscriber units. The cost model that was presented today was imposed on us, and that's why we are standing up and trying to explain to all of those that are willing to listen that there are challenges with it, associated with it. As an example, the Ben Loman or the Boulder Creek Fire District that serves, you know, 5,000 people, that uses, that has 20 radios, is arguably going to pay five times as much as an agency that has four radios or two radios within it. So there's a lot of different ways to look at a funding model, basing it on subscriber units, we believe is disproportionately unfair, especially to those smaller agencies, and that's why we're speaking out against this. It's the first time I got to see Ryan in person, we've been on multiple Zoom conversations since last year about funding models. They were looking at population, they were looking at number of clicks on the system, they were looking at population base, but unfortunately, none of those were realized. They sided with the one that disproportionately affects the fire districts mostly. And just in closing, I do want to advocate for a joint powers agreement for this. There's a lot of trust and concerns with the fire districts related to this, and we believe that if there is a JPA, maybe we'll have more influence over the decisions that are being made on this project. And again, we do support interoperable communications, just not under the price tag that's being presented. Thank you.
Before we take it to online comments?
Thank you. Becky Steinbrenner, I'm a resident, rural resident of District Two, where the current communication is challenging. But people rely upon information they hear on scanners, especially in emergencies, to really understand what's happening in their local community. And so I want to ask if it is a requirement that law enforcement and fire both be encrypted? Is this a state mandate? That has not been discussed really here. It is also a problem for the press to be able to follow local events effectively. I want to bring to your attention that CAL FIRE is not taking part in this. They're huge. They're huge. They're not, they're not signing up for this because they say they don't have to. So how is interoperability going to work in our county when CAL FIRE is such a big presence and in emergencies and daily responses? You also, I have for you, I heard this presentation at the Watsonville City Council meeting last week, and I have for you, for the record, a list of Ring agencies' total fee schedule. And I noted that Paharo Valley Fire is not even included. They're not included because they're part of CAL FIRE. So how is Paharo Valley Fire going to be included in the interoperability with the other local fire jurisdictions? It's been discussed, this cost for Zianti Fire, $965,634. How can this be fair and how can this be sustainable? I don't approve of this at all, and I hope that you will just table it and involve the fire department and the public a lot more. I support a JPA, and I think that the county has not even fully implemented their radio emergency response plan where they sold the tower at Watsonville Fire Station and planned to put it up on the Eutherics. It hasn't even been completed yet. So please, table this and look at it more carefully. I will submit this for the record, and this is from the Watsonville City Council agenda.
Thank you. Okay, we'll see if we have any comments online.
Yes, Chair. Call in user one, your microphone's now available.
I agree with Becky Steinbrenner, this should be tabled. Wow, $28 million. I think some corporate interests are making money off this. This is huge. And I think money from the county could be better spent. I think we have real emergencies and poverty and hunger and housing. Boy, what we could do with that money. I'm thinking of this book called Toxic Sludge is Good for You: Lies, Damn Lies, and the Public Relations Industry. And I think that's what we've heard right now. One of these PR firms states, "The role of our communication is to manage perception, which motivates behavior, to create business results." I think that's what's going on here. The elephant in the room is radiation, microwaves, danger radiation, danger radiation. We needed a system like landlines, more landlines about emergencies, they are invaluable, should be promoted. But the facts are that cell phones, cell towers, Wi-Fi, wireless smart meters, wireless technology emit microwave radio frequency radiation, and you're talking about this like, oh, this is just fabulous. It's not. Independent research shows this radiation causes cellular stress and damage, DNA damage, blood-brain barrier disruption, increased cancer and tumor risk.
Thank you.
We have no further speakers online, Chair.
Thank you. Before we bring it back, I wanted to see if we have...
Pardon me. We have a member of the youth community here who's not familiar, he would like to speak. He wasn't familiar with the process. Would you allow him?
Hold on that way.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. My name is Keenan Lindsay. I'm a, I'm from District One, SoCal. And as a radio hobbyist, as a radio hobbyist, I have concerns about this, about the encryption for public events, for the press, that will not have, that will not be able to receive those communications. I think it is important that the public can receive those communications. And I'm also very concerned about the cost of this. It's very expensive, and I would, I agree with Becky Steinbrenner, I think it should be tabled. Thank you.
So before we bring it back to the board, I wanted to see if we can address some of the questions that were raised, specifically, you know, some of the fire districts, smaller fire districts, if there's a mechanism to bring the cost down or offset the cost for the rates for our member agencies, whether it's like, I know you mentioned local measures, but whether it's increased participation, grant funding, state or federal funding, anything that could lower the cost for member agencies, especially the smaller ones.
Sure. Of course, as I mentioned, there's an opportunity to lower the cost if we can bring funding in from other sources, be it state, federal, or another revenue measure. In terms, the other way you can lower costs on a per-unit basis is to have more people as part of the system. And there are additional radio users within our region who are not currently a part of this system, whether, and I'm just giving examples, whether it's metro, whether it's our county office of ed and our school bus systems, and those are things we can look at in the future, and that idea of bringing that per-device cost down by spreading the costs of this system over a larger body of users. Those are all things we are, we would absolutely want to pursue for the benefit of all folks. In terms of taking a different approach for very small users, right now, the way the governance agreement is set up, there is, they are not paying a proportional cost of the capital system. So they would just be paying a connection fee and an O&amp;M cost. So there is something there in that different approach to levels of participation as well.
And the young gentleman's question, I also had a few inquiries about that, especially with like the content creators on social media that give updates. And lots of, we have, I don't know why, a lot of police radio scanner enthusiasts over there.
So I'm going to actually ask the two people that I think have a closer perspective on it, I'm going to ask Mr. Fraley from the systems design perspective, but I'm also going to look at Sheriff Clark, because what we're talking about is the encryption requirement for law enforcement, which is not a local requirement, and I'm going to have the sheriff speak to that, because I think both of them can address those questions.
So from a technical perspective, right, the system is going to be state-of-the-art, and it is, it'll be interoperable, and it will have encryption capability. Whether or not the encryption is turned on is a policy decision which the sheriff will speak to. So if fire agencies choose not to turn on encryption, people can still hear it on their scanner, people can get it through streaming services, however it is, through an app, right? It's all about whether about turning on the encryption, but we need to make that technology available for the reasons why Sheriff Clark is going to speak to.
Yeah, so that's a great point, Board. In fact, the transparency piece surrounding the encryption is something that was a statewide conversation in 2020, when the Department of Justice took the initiative to making this step. They did that in an effort, in terms of the encryption, they did that in an effort to protect personal identifying information. There's a lot of things that go out of a radio, there's criminal history information, names, states, suburb. It was also in an effort to protect victims of, victims of crime, frankly. So because the sensitivity of a lot of that information, the state chose to go, to go to this encryption standard. Now, that doesn't negate the, you know, the ability for media and other folks to know what's going on. And I, and so that will be a piece of this going forward, is figuring out how to allow our media partners access to what's going on near, in near real time. I know that there's other jurisdictions that have workarounds for that, and so that's absolutely something we'll be exploring for the sake of just making sure that the community as well as the media knows what's occurring around them. Hopefully that answers your question, Chair.
I think the final one's about interoperability with CAL FIRE or Paharo Valley. Is there a way to still communicate with them?
Yes, absolutely.
So the system, Ring system, is really for the users that are not on a statewide system like CAL FIRE is on a statewide system. So Paharo Valley, CSA 48, all the county fire, they, because CAL FIRE is our county fire, they operate on their system, and they operate on their system because they are a statewide agency and organization. So they need to be able to speak from Humboldt all the way down to San Diego, right, for their units. And so that's why, from an interoperable, or actually a Ring inclusion piece, they're not part of the Ring system. However, we have made 100% provisions so that it is seamless communication between CAL FIRE and our new interoperable system, right? We've, we're going to be installing, it's called in an ISSI switch, right, which allows, and will have it turned on all the time, so that then the two different radio systems will be patched together, and it'll be seamless for the user. You won't even notice, right? If we go into CAL FIRE's, if anybody responds in the CAL FIRE's area, you simply switch the knob on your radio to whatever that read-upon frequency is, and you speak as if it was seamless, right? And the same thing for them coming into ours, they just turn the knob to what we've agreed to as the frequency, they speak on that frequency, it gets translated onto our system, seamless. Right now, that becomes difficult, right, because the two systems are of older generation, and they're not new technology. Because we have, the key thing about this is that the new technology that Ring brings allows us to do anything from a technological standpoint, right? We can patch frequencies, there's been questions about mutual aid coming in. We can't bring in mutual aid and speak with them if they're on an 800 or 700 frequency because our system is 30 years old. We don't have the technology to do that. With the new technology, anybody with any frequency range coming in, the dispatchers will be able to patch through, and if we know ahead of time, we'll even make those provisions, like for Monterey County, Santa Clara County, San Mateo County, we'll already have provisions and talk groups and zones already established, both law and fire and municipal already established. So all you have to do is turn the knob on your radio and speak to whoever it is in Monterey County. Right now, Watsonville, if they go on a police chase down to Monterey County, not only do they lose communication with their dispatch center, they can't talk to anybody in Monterey County. Those problems will be solved.
Thank you. Maybe one day we'll get CAL FIRE on a member agency, that'll really lower the cost.
Yes, it would. That would be huge.
All right, I'll bring it back to the board for any comments, questions. I'll start to my right with Supervisor Cummings.
Thank you, Chair. Two questions, and one made for clarification, because I think it was mentioned. When do we have to start paying the debt on this service down?
We anticipate our first debt service payment in fiscal year 2029. It'll be, because we're starting this project halfway through the year, it'll be a half payment in 2029.
Okay, and then, you know, the fire chiefs in their letter, you know, they mentioned that I think it was eight, roughly 8% increase to the budgets, but what does that mean in terms of actual numbers, in terms of dollars? Do we have that information?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure we can answer the question as asked. I think Ryan may be able to answer the question of, what do they pay today, which I think I know the answer of, compared to what the projected cost would be based on radio count three years from now? If we don't have it in front of us, Supervisor Cummings, we can get it to you, but I think collectively, the fire chiefs today pay around $37,000 a year for radio system. Is that correct, Tammy?
Yes. Yeah, that's correct.
And do you got the ballpark there, Ryan, or do we want to get back outside of the meeting?
Yeah, Supervisor, we'll follow up with exact projected numbers for the independent fire districts as well. There's a lot of assumptions made when we try to project out costs, you know, across a 13-year time horizon, there's a lot of factors that go into, it's really, I credit crystal ball to try to get that, but we'll give you some rough order of magnitude numbers. What we can say is that as the system comes operational in 2029, 2030, is we're looking at a per-device cost of around $106 to $110 per radio per month. So that's roughly $1,300 a month per radio that would be assessing to subscriber districts, which, like the independent fire districts.
Okay, we got one more person who has an answer, I think.
Okay, so again, these are estimates, I've got the, the numbers up as projected, and roughly the numbers are around, collectively, for all the fire agencies, right around $300,000 a year. It ranges in, and this is for both capital as well as operational costs combined, it ranges from anywhere from as low as about $80,000, $75,000, $80,000 a year for a combined, all the way up to, Central Fire is looking at 300, just under, just right around 300,000. So I guess collectively, it's going to be with Central Fire included, will be about 500,000, right? So the small agencies, we're talking 200,000, and then Central is about 300,000. So the small agencies, we're talking 200,000 and then Central is about 300,000. But these are all estimates, right? And, and based on what we're able to continue to work with them, I mean, I, I know that Elisa's had, and the group has had several, several meetings with the fire agencies. We continue to be open, wanna continue to work with them and have conversations to, you know, we understand that this is a big ask and a big number and we've tried to be as inclusive and equitable in everything that we've done from meetings to discussions to communications and we stand to continue to do that.
Appreciate that. Um, I guess I'll just wrap up by comments by saying, um, you know, I'm really sympathetic to the fire agencies, uh, but then also just wanna acknowledge the amount of time and the years, uh, that have been put into this and, and, you know, where we've got today obviously is not perfect, but I think, you know, given the commitments across all the different jurisdictions, you know, I think we should move forward. Additionally, since, you know, fiscal year 29 is when we're gonna start making these payments, we do have time to kind of work through some of these cost issues. And, you know, um, one of the things that came to mind for me was, you know, given the voters just passed Measure Q and I know that the fire districts were upset with kind of being left out of that, is this an opportunity for us to help use Measure Q funds to offset some of these costs around, uh, this radio system? And so I guess when the time comes for the motion, I, I do want to provide a little bit of additional direction regarding, um, having staff explore, um, other funding sources to help offset these costs, including, but not limited to grants, Measure Q, um, and earmarks, uh, from our state and federal elected officials. So, um, I appreciate all the work that's been done on this and I think we're, uh, on a good path forward, but we still have some kinks to work out and I'm glad we still have some time to work those out before those costs actually hit our agencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor, uh, Disurpa.
Thank you. Um, and I apologize, I stepped away just for a couple of minutes, so if I missed something, I apologize. I have a question about what would be the benefits of creating a JPA for this project? I don't know if somebody could speak to that.
Well, I think this was something we talked about with all of our city partners and what I can describe is people see the value of doing a JPA and the governance structure and authority it gives to a JPA board, as well as potential taxing authority, depending on how it's constructed. So there's just this idea of truly an independent entity. I will also share Supervisor Disurpa that at one point there was like, well, can't we just add this to what Netcom does? That is an existing JPA. Well, not everyone is members of that. Scotts Valley is not a member of that. But it's a, that's a different body of work. Like 911 dispatch is different than running a countywide critical communications system. So when we really started digging into the governance structure 18-plus months ago, uh, folks, yeah, it looks kinda like a JPA, but they really didn't wanna go there. And it really wasn't until we got to this fall where people started coming back around to that question. And again, we, we said, we, we don't wanna try and figure this out right now, we need to move forward to get this infrastructure into place and it's absolutely something we can convert this structure to should, uh, we, we come together and decide that is really the best direction for the county as a region to go.
I'm sorry, Liz, can you just explain to the public, like, what the benefit of the JPA would be in this project?
Well, I think it-
What would it afford?
Well, I, I think it depends on how you structure it, so I don't wanna make commitments to something when it's not a totally detailed structure. I don't know that it changes the benefits to the public. I think it changes the way that our member agencies are involved in decision-making. And quite frankly, it would change the way this board is involved in decision-making because it would be outs, it would be a JPA, just like Netcom or the library boards, there, that there's a different entity, um, where those decisions sit. So it's, from my perspective, and I welcome input from any of the team, it's not so much, it will not change how the public is served, but it would change how, modestly change how the governance works.
Okay, and then-
I'm sorry, there's also a, a question, or a system ownership, right? So currently the county owns the system and everybody is now coming together on a contract, on agreement to say, hey, we're gonna collectively govern and share, um, financial obligations in the system, the actual equipment. If we had a JPA, the JPA would own the equipment. And so that would then live separately. So there's, there's some, um, questions as it relates to control and sort of equitable share and equity sort of, sort of thing. So that, that's what a JPA would bring. Also, some other options or avenues for potential revenue.
Thank you. Um, so I represent a very rural area, uh, and so I'm concerned about usability of this system in Browns Valley, Eureka Canyon, Trail Gulch, Dave Valley, Rodeo Gulch, et cetera, et cetera. Can you, I don't know if you've talked about that yet when I was gone, but-
We haven't, but thank you for asking-
Can we talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I'd like to speak specifically about service coverage because service coverage is, is very important to everybody throughout the entire county, whether it's Hazel Dell, Browns Valley, the rural hills down in, in District 2, or up in the San Lorenzo Valley or in Bonny Doon. Really, every single one of your districts has an aspect that raises the question about service coverage. So I have prepared a little bit here and I will wanna speak to that service coverage and how we are guaranteeing service coverage 95% of the county. So, um, I will just start that, right? As a retired fire chief, uh, especially from this county, I have the keen awareness and unique sort of position to fully understand the concerns that especially the fire agencies have brought up, but everybody, right? The sheriff is concerned about coverage in those areas. There are four reasons why I can confidently say that service coverage is gonna be exceptional within Santa Cruz County. Number one, the Ring team listened to the concerns of all of the technical representatives, but especially the fire agency representatives during the technical meetings and actually adjusted the RFP to include the provision of 95% on-street portable coverage. What that means is your portable radio standing on the street, 95% of the area needs to be covered, which is unheard of. Industry standard is right around 90%. So 95% is, I mean, you can't give 100% coverage, there's just no way you can do that. So with this higher standard, we put that in the RFP, we sent it out. The, um, four agents, four different vendors that supplied the responses, um, met that 95, and I will say that EF Johnson, JBC Kenwood, did not take exception to the 95% coverage street, or on-street portable coverage and submitted the most detailed engineering designs, coverage maps and technical specifications of all the RFP respondents. None were closer, none. That's why they are the pervert vendor for this project and that's why they are here today. Third, engineers and construction representatives from EF Johnson took the extra time, once we started negotiations, to really troubleshoot the identified problem areas, because in the RFP, we had identified problem areas. We conducted eight technical engineering meetings, um, thoroughly problem solving each of these problem areas, which culminated in a two-day sidewalk of a dozen different sites to make sure that what we saw from an engineering and technical perspective actually was gonna play out in real life. This led to innovative solutions for the SoCal San Jose corridor, along with a new radio simulcast site in Locklom and Lompico area. This additional work has given the project team an extremely high level of confidence that these problem areas have been adequately addressed and that we will have exceptional service coverage in, throughout the entire county. Both the RFP specifications and EF Johnson's proposal require an intensive and thorough acceptance test protocol. Through this protocol, the Ring team will be able to ensure that the service coverage that every radio user needs will be provided and available. The technical advisory group, which is comprised of members, membership representatives from every public safety and municipal agency or department, will be intimately involved in this process as well as every aspect of the Ring radio system build-out. So from a service coverage perspective, I, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say this personally, I wish that the numerous times that I've explained this to the public and to different groups, that that message would continue to perpetuate, rather than the perpetuation of this question of, you know, is service gonna be available in these areas? And I know that you're asking for the public and I appreciate that because then I was able to give this answer, um, but hopefully from this day forward, people realize that we're, have gone above and beyond to provide the highest, um, service coverage level of any system that I know of within the state of California, right? Our current service and system is woefully lower than that. We're probably talking probably 60, 65%.
Jim, thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to ask the question so that you could clarify. I, I just, I need to say this because with our areas in our county, especially in those rural areas where we still don't have any cellphone coverage, are very limited cellphone coverage, especially if electricity goes down, et cetera. Is there any, and I have asked if any new towers are erected or et cetera, et cetera, that we could think about trying to also put connectivity on those towers for, um, for citizens out in those rural canyons and gulches?
We will, as we move forward, make sure to take those into consideration. I know that some of, that, especially the vendor, um, they have had extensive experience in doing that, working with different wireless carriers, um, in, while things are being constructed. And so I hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. And then my last, um, question, uh, is just about our local journalists there. I think they're very, very concerned about, um, you know, the radios going dark because it's a, a public service really they're providing and, you know, a couple of them have told me that, um, in the 18 or 20 years they've been listening to the radio, they have not really heard at all any release of confidential information, so, anyway. And I, I know there's a memo, a justice memo, and that it's something that we must do, but-
Yeah, that, that boils down to a policy, uh, decision by the law enforcement agencies because that's where most of the sort of rub will come and the sheriff's already mentioned that, uh, the reasons why.
Thank you. Supervisor Martinez.
Thank you, Chair. And I wanted to start off by thanking the staff, the team who've worked really hard over many months to get us to this point. I think everybody can agree that the current system that we're on is not a long-term plan. It's, it has many flaws, it has created challenges during large-scale disasters like the seizure of fires, um, or as was referenced, um, the situation involving Sergeant Gutzweiler in the valley several years ago. And so we need a system that provides greater communication and reliability among all of our emergency services. So I appreciate you doing all this work to get us here. As was expressed from our fire chiefs earlier, you know, there continues to be a series of questions, um, really as it relates to the subscriber agencies. You know, in a letter that we received earlier today, it's, you know, kind of three areas outlined, um, the coverage concerns, which you just outlined and, um, appreciate the additional information you shared. Of course, the financial concerns and how it will impact our special districts and the governance concerns. Because what I'm, what I'm recognizing in the way that the master agreement is currently structured is that, you know, we will be, the system will be imposing almost like a taxation without representation in some regards for those subscriber agencies. And so, um, I feel like it's our job to better understand down the road where, what that will look like for our special districts. I mean, I think we can all agree that a system isn't interoperable if our fire districts aren't in it, right? That wouldn't be a, a success. So what do you see as the process over the next three years to reach more information, more answers for those subscriber agencies on what it could look like? Um, and, and will that be coming to the board, uh, before it's shared with them or, I guess, finalized with them?
I think there's, uh, there's a, a number of different questions that you've asked. First and foremost, there is always the opportunity to add additional executive members to provide, um, another perspective. There have been discussions with fire districts prior to this date about them serving on that executive committee and they were not comfortable yet in taking that on. So make no mistake, the invitation has been extended. And when they said they weren't comfortable moving forward with that, for, for very reasonable reasons, we said, that's, that's great. We are very open and we think the, the municipal, um, executive members are very open to having additional fire representation in that committee. And, um, as this, and it would be an amendment to this agreement, we, we would, my expectation is we would bring that back to the board. We'll get further along in the subscriber agreement. I don't know and have to talk to my lawyer if we need to bring that to the board. But I, I mean, I think that's always something where, where we, we would be wanting to get your, your insight and your thoughts on as well, because you just have a different vantage points as we work with our partners across the community.
Yeah, I just wanted to also add to what, um, Elisa said is that it was, it was discussed about the subscriber agreement and they'd asked and, and we said, hey, we want to build this together with you so that it actually addresses the concerns rather than, again, imposing something on them, like here's a subscriber agreement, you have to go with it. So the fact that, you know, subscriber agreement doesn't exist today is because we are planning, we're waiting on and had actually communicated with them that we were gonna build it together. So, you know, we're definitely open to seeing what the opportunities are. The, the one thing that has not been mentioned, and I'd like to mention it, is, is that on the executive committee, both the law chiefs and the fire chiefs have a non-voting member. So they're, they're in the room when discussions are being had, they have the ability to speak to whatever the conversation is. They are a non-voting member, I will say, but they will, they are in the room. It's not like they're not in the room. So, but definitely, we, as, uh, Elisa had said, we're open to exploring every opportunity that's out there.
I appreciate that. Um, and I, and I know you understand this, but I just wanna share, um, our special districts are under a tremendous amount of pressure right now, financial pressure, um, for a variety of reasons and changing factors. And so when we're talking about a cost, you know, it may sound like, you know, 100,000, 200,000 might not be that much, but for a agency that has a $1 million annual budget, that's a tremendous cost that they haven't accounted for. And so, you know, I'm glad we have more time, there's three years to try to reach some solutions to what's more of a structural challenge for these districts. I, I'm eager to hear the additional direction from my colleague on the board related to seeking additional funding, um, that might be a part of today's action, um, because I, I think that's a step in the right direction. And, um, and I hope that our special districts, our fire districts, will continue to participate in the conversation and take the county up on opportunities to potentially sit on the executive board, to- executive board, to help design the subscriber agreements, and to try to get to a solution. I think we all agree that we would be stronger if we're all in this together, and we'll have a better response time for our public, which is ultimately why we're here. So, so I'm going to be voting in support of this item today, because I think we all, we know this improvement is needed, and I think that the due diligence to bring us a product, and a contract, and a financing mechanism was well done. I am still cautious and concerned about kind of the ongoing plan to sustain costs and, and, and I am glad that this approach doesn't impose costs on those smaller districts today, that that's a kind of future outlook. So, so when an action is made, you know, those are the considerations that I'm making. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Conning.
Yeah, thank you. I'll be brief. I mean, I really appreciate all the work that has gone into this. I mean, clearly, you guys have, have done your homework with extra credit here, and it's in response to a clearly identified problem, right? We cannot continue to respond to major disasters in our community with sixty, sixty-five percent coverage. It's just unacceptable. The inability to conduct, you know, for our police in Watsonville to conduct a chase south of the county line, I mean, it's unacceptable. So, I mean, I certainly hear the concerns that the fire districts have raised, and that was definitely, you know, took those to heart. I mean, what gives me confidence that it's, we'll still be able to move forward here is that, first of all, the interoperability, the fact that you can, you know, switch the dial, and everyone will still be able to talk to each other. And then, second of all, the fact that if they choose not to, again, this is, I, I hope that we do find a way to fund their participation, again, but the three-year lead-in, I think that that's very, very possible. And if not, we'll still be able to talk to each other because of interoperability, and that ultimately, the primary agencies, jurisdictions here, the cities, counties, and UCSC can support the costs of this system even without all the fire districts' participation. So, I'm supportive of the actions today and look forward to moving forward, including any suggestions from my colleague on funding opportunities.
So, with that, before, I want to ask County Council some questions about Measure Q money. Can we use that money? Because I thought it was just for the cities, counties, resource district, and land trust. But multiple agencies, we've got like over twenty agencies involved. Can that money get, be gifted or granted from a different agency? We haven't even asked them.
So, Measure Q, you know, part of it is fire prevention, and I think that...
I read it, but it didn't mention police technology, you know, police.
I think this is, this is the question that, that Ms. Benson is going to have for us to explore in more detail, is exactly the question you have. So, I mean, it has, the work hasn't been done yet to determine one way or the other. But we can do that work.
Research it at least.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, with that, I'll bring you back to the board.
I'm happy to make the motion.
A second.
Supervisor Cummings, okay.
Wait, oh wait, but I'll, I'll move the staff recommendation and add that we direct staff to explore funding options to help offset the cost, including but not limited to exploring Measure Q funds, Measure K funds, state and federal grants, and also that we engage with our state and federal elected officials to explore opportunities for funding line items to be added to the state budget, and that we have staff return with an update to the board no later than the annual budget hearings.
Send June to lie.
And I'll second.
And we have, so we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Yes, noted. Supervisor Conning.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
De Sera.
Aye.
And Hernandez.
Aye. Sorry about that, Cummings, I didn't see you on the screen, so I couldn't address you. All right, we're going to continue on to finish the items before we go to our break. So, we have next item number, number eight. Hold the public hearing under the Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility and adopt a resolution for the proposed issuance of bonds of the California Municipal Finance Authority in the amount not to exceed one hundred and five million to finance and refinance acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of multifamily rental housing project located at 2755 41st Avenue, SoCal, California. Alterna it over to Peter Detliff, Principal Administrative Analyst for the presentation.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Again, I'm Peter Detliff, Principal Administrative Analyst with the County Executive Office. The proposed public hearing under the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act is to authorize the proposed issuance of bonds in the amount not to exceed one hundred and five million by the California Municipal Finance Authority for the benefit of SoCal Pacific Associates LP. The proceeds of the bonds will be used to finance or refinance the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping, equipping of a multifamily rental housing project located at 2755 41st Avenue in SoCal. Pursuant to the IRS Code, an elected body within the territorial limits of the project must hold a hearing for, to allow the public to comment on the proposed issuance of bonds. The county has no liability for the repayment of the bonds. The proper notice for the hearing has been provided as required. Representatives from the financing team are available here today in person, and I believe online, to answer any questions as needed. And so, at this point, I recommend that you, your board, open the public hearing for comment and adopt the resolution.
So, this is the hearing, and I'll now open the public hearing, but first, we'll have input from the public. Was that, was the presentation finished? Okay. See none, anybody online?
Yes, Chair.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. I'm not sure if I want to be supportive of this particular situation. I'm just looking at it from the standpoint of congestion. If this is where this is by first in SoCal, I don't totally understand it, but I see the monumental traffic that comes down San Jose, SoCal, and sometimes it could be quite horrendous, and with a huge multi, multifamily structure, their rental units, I, I could see how that could make the problem significantly worse. And, and then, you know, also, we're talking about, you know, radios and fire and whatnot, which, by the way, I'm supportive, okay, just so you know. But that might also make evacuation difficult for mountain communities above that are surrounding, and also for the community down there, if they want to go the other direction in case there's some sort of a major fire event. But I think for the most part, you know, just looking at how LA went down, the fire raced downhill, so you might have a lot of folks falling downhill, looking for ways to get to Highway One, so they can migrate out, and, you know, creating a situation where there's more congestion down there, you know, it might endanger a lot of people. So, maybe that's not such a good idea. Maybe putting it in, in, in an area that's a little more suitable from a traffic management standpoint. So, those are my thoughts on that. And, and yes, the radio thing, I'm supportive, just so you know, because I am a little worried again about the Trump administration, and I don't like how he's behaving there. So, anything to help us survive, I think is a good thing. Anyways, thank you very much. You take it easy.
We have no further speakers online, Chair.
I'll bring you back to the board to entertain a motion.
I'll move the recommended actions.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Conning and a second from Supervisor Martinez, if we can take a roll call vote.
Supervisor De Sera.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Conick.
Aye.
And Hernandez.
Aye. Most passes unanimously. Okay, we're moving along. Next, we have item number nine on the agenda. It's to hold a public hearing to consider whether to take jurisdiction of appeal of the Planning Commission action to approve development permit application number 241371. I'll now open this public hearing and invite our, Matt Machado, our Director of Community Development and Infrastructure, and Jonathan De Salvo, project planner, to present the staff report. Before I do that, I want to say that we will give, we will, we will hear from the appellant for up to ten minutes to present their basis of appeal, followed by the developer, who will also have up to ten minutes. Now, I'll turn it over to our staff.
We're all good now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. Jonathan De Salvo, CDI Planning Division staff. Today, I'm presenting the jurisdictional appeal of the Planning Commission approval of development permit application number 241371, and asking the board to consider whether to take jurisdiction pursuant to County Code Section 1810 340. I'll provide a brief overview of the project, a summary of the appeal claims, staff analysis regarding each jurisdictional ground, and staff's recommendation to the board. Project includes a proposal to construct fifty-seven residential units within a five-story multifamily building and associated site improvements. Project includes four affordable units comprising of one very low-income unit and three extremely low-income units. This project received approval from the Planning Commission of a site development permit pursuant to Senate Bill 330 and builder's remedy pursuant to Government Code Section 65589.5 and density bonus pursuant to Government Code Section 65915. Project site is located at 841 Capitola Road in Live Oak. This slide reflects relevant project history and dates. Importantly, the project was approved by the Planning Commission on October 22nd, 2025. Following the commission's approval, an appeal was filed by Michael Reese, representing supporters of reasonable development for Live Oak. Under County Code Section 1810 340, the board may take jurisdiction only if the appellant demonstrates at least one qualifying jurisdictional ground, such as procedural error, lack of a fair hearing, unsupported findings, or significant new evidence. Staff review of the appeal letter concludes that the appellant has not sufficiently demonstrated that there are grounds for the board to take jurisdiction. First, the, first, the appellant raises several concerns, which I will briefly summarize and address in turn. First, the appellant argues that significant new evidence shows the county's housing element was effectively in substantial compliance in March of 2024, before the SB 330 preliminary application was submitted, and therefore, builder's remedy provisions should not apply. In response, county staff maintains that this is not new evidence. Information cited in the appeal is already available and was before the Planning Commission at the time of its decision. Under both statute and HCD's ratified regulatory interpretation, the housing element is in compliance as of the date HCD issues its formal substantial compliance letter. For Santa Cruz County, that letter from HCD was issued on April 23rd, 2024. The appellant submitted their SB 330 preliminary application on April 9th, 2024, before the issuance of the HCD letter. Therefore, the project vested under builder's remedy. Secondly, the appellant claims that the decision was not supported by facts, and the county should have conducted a broader health and safety or traffic safety assessment. In response, county staff maintains that under the State Housing Accountability Act, the county may only deny or condition a project if there's, if there's evidence of a specific adverse impact based on objective written health and safety standards as existed on the date the application was deemed complete. The appellant has not, does not identify any such adverse impact. Instead, they request that new studies be conducted. However, under state law, the county cannot require new or additional studies, not already on its published list of required information unless needed for CEQA. A health and safety study or standalone safety, traffic safety assessment is not on that list, nor required for the CEQA exemption. Furthermore, a traffic report for level of service was provided and reviewed. Impacts to level of service remain acceptable at LOSC or better at key intersections. Project was reviewed by the Central Fire District, and as conditioned, will be required to meet all fire district requirements. And the record contains no evidence of specific quantifiable adverse impact based on objective written health and safety standards as they existed on the date the application was deemed complete. Thus, the appeal does not meet jurisdictional standards. Third, the appellant asserts that the project's access configuration using Gray Seal Road instead of Capitola Road for access is unsupported. The project's access as designed complies with general plan policies and public works engineering staff review. State law limits governments to applying only objective standards to builder's remedy and density bonus projects. A local agency cannot redesign the project nor impose subjective requirements. Importantly, CDI Public Works Division previously advised against the Capitola Road driveway access due to safety and operational concerns. Any new access point on Capitola Road would require new studies, which the county cannot require under density bonus law. The applicant does not support changing access to Capitola Road and has clarified so in writing. Staff therefore concludes that the Planning Commission's decision approving the project with the driveway access as designed is consistent with applicable general plan policies, engineering best practices, and fully supported by the record. Lastly, the appellant asserts that the county should have challenged the applicant's parking concession more strongly, and a new parking study should be conducted. The record showed that staff did challenge the applicant's original concession request for zero parking spaces. Staff recommended reducing the concession to allow thirty-one spaces, as included in the design of the project, and thus, the highest feasible number of parking spaces given site constraints and cost reduction requirements. Under density bonus law, applicants may request concessions at reduced development standards. Local governments must grant concessions unless specific statutory findings can be made. The county cannot require pro formas or other financial documentation to justify concessions. The county cannot impose higher parking ratios without a jurisdiction-wide parking study conducted within the last seven years, and the county has not conducted such a study. Therefore, staff and the Planning Commission applied state law correctly, and the decision is supported by substantial evidence. In reviewing the appeal letter, staff concludes there to be no procedural error or abuse of discretion by the Planning Commission, no lack of a fair and impartial hearing, a decision fully supported by facts in the project application, consistent with County Code and state law, no significant new evidence that could have been presented earlier, and thus, no factors that would justify further review by a second hearing body. Staff recommendation is, is to conduct a public hearing to consider whether to take jurisdiction of the appeal of the Planning Commission action to approve application number 241371, and decline to take jurisdiction of, of the appeal of the project, which received unanimous approval by the Planning Commission. This concludes the presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
With that, this is the hearing. We will now hear from the appellant. Do we have anybody here? Okay. We have up to ten minutes to present the basis of the appeal. And is the developer here too? Okay.
Please turn on your mic. There you go. Okay. Let me start over again. At its core, this appeal needs to be heard by the board because the Planning Commission acted on an incomplete record. At its core, this appeal needs to be heard by the board because the Planning Commission acted on an incomplete record. They lacked substantial new evidence regarding HCD's clerical error, and they were incorrectly advised that they lacked the authority to independently verify the project's eligibility. Only this board has the jurisdiction to ensure this decision is based on all the facts, including the new evidence providing proving compliance in March. First off, this new evidence, which was entered into the appeal record on Friday, did not exist in the public record at the time of the hearing. Weeks after the Commission's decision, I received an internal HCD memo and their housing element workflow via a public records request, which proves the following. HCD confirms that the county's amended element addressed their prior feedback on March 15th. This is the same day that HCD called county staff to give notice that they were ready to certify. Per HCD's workflow, this phone call to the jurisdiction is only triggered after their substantive review is complete. HCD admits that they were working towards a false deadline of April 29th to send their formal certification letter instead of the correct date of April 13th. HCD later corrected the certification letter date to help the county avoid a rezoning penalty, acknowledging that its internal delay was administrative and did not reflect any substantial ongoing review. Specifically in regards to this builder's remedy argument, one, the county should want to be able to enforce its general plan and zoning requirements and should relinquish this authority only if the law requires it. Two, builder's remedy is intended to incentivize agencies to adopt compliant housing elements on time and to essentially punish recalcitrant jurisdictions that are dragging their feet. And three, here, the county did everything conscientiously and on time to meet the deadline provided by HCD and should not be punished by HCD's admitted error. The evidence is clear that the version of the housing element, which the county submitted in February, was substantially compliant, and that HCD Housing Element staff affirmed this. The fact that no further changes were ever made to the element is proof positive of this. Second, existing critical evidence was not reviewed in detail. Prior to the hearing, we submitted documentation that raised a substantial question. Was the county's housing element already substantially compliant before this application became legally complete on April 9th? In staff's response to our appeal, its citation of AB 1886 is misleading since the quoted text referencing the HCD letter was never included in the codified statutory language that was ultimately adopted into law. AB 1886 prevents the county from self-certifying, but it does not prevent a court or this board from reviewing builder's remedy eligibility based on the real timing of when substantial compliance actually existed. Staff advised the Commission to treat the HCD letter as absolute and without examining whether substantive compliance was actually achieved prior to the application submission. Third, key determinations were made without evidentiary basis. On health and safety impact, staff openly acknowledged that no study existed beyond the level of service study, even as the commissioners at the hearing expressed concern that the project may create, quote, "specific adverse impact" under Government Code. They were then told that they could not request a study. Basically, the study had to have been run before the application was heard, which creates, uh, it's a pretty big concern. On the project's access plan, staff at the hearing could not identify the specific standard or policy preventing the use of the property's Capitola Road entrance, while the applicant stated that they have wanted to use its entrance for years. Staff only provided a justification after the appeal was filed, meaning the Commission never had a chance to review it. Finally, this is the first builder's remedy project being brought before you. The legal standards are complex, and the Commission was not equipped to address them. Only the board has the jurisdiction and the capacity to ensure that the county's actions are defensible, transparent, and supported by a complete record. Taking jurisdiction today does not impose any penalties on the county. It simply allows you to determine whether this project ever qualified for builder's remedy in the first place. For these reasons, our appeal demonstrates multiple independent grounds for jurisdiction. There is new key evidence that was unavailable at the time of the hearing. Existing material evidence was not fully reviewed. Findings were made without supporting facts, and so therefore, the resulting decision is unjustified. We respectfully request that the county assume jurisdiction so that these issues can receive the full and proper evaluation that they deserve. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Are you gonna concede the rest of the time for the developer, or that's it?
Uh, am I allowed to concede the ti, or?
Yes.
All the time for rebuttal?
Yes, well, or that too.
We would note four minutes and 30 seconds remain on your time if you want to respond to anything that the developer has to offer.
Okay, thank you. So now, turn, oh.
Sorry, our turn?
I'm gonna turn it back to the public, uh, for any public comment if we don't have anything else.
Yeah, now, now, now would be the developers' 10 minutes to respond.
Okay, so it is additional 10 minutes, okay.
10 minutes for the developer to respond
Yes.
to the, uh, appellant.
So now, will now the developer come up, and you have 10 minutes?
Thank you so much. Morning Chair and Supervisors, my name is Tim Gordon, and I'm the applicant for the project at 841 Capitola Road. First off, I want to thank you for your time and energy towards understanding our project. This is really complex in a lot of ways, and we appreciate you spending your time with us because it's very valuable. Um, I want to acknowledge that the neighbors, the, the opposition, the neighbors on Gray Seal Road. I understand that this project present, represents a huge change, and that change is sometimes very difficult. I totally understand that. I get that that's why they're here today, doing everything they can to resist that change. But as we all know, even though change is hard, it's sometimes necessary. I don't have to go into the depths of our housing crisis or why the county is the least affordable place to live in the entire country. I think you all know those facts fairly well. This change is required. It's critical to move our county forward towards solving the housing needs. And this is one project that's in our hand, 57 units that we can just say yes to. I want to commend the staff, Planning Commission, and my team because this project has been going on for many years with multiple iterations and is probably one of the more complicated housing projects that any of us will ever see. Our team has done an excellent job navigating this. Staff has done an amazing job at working through it with us. It's very challenging. Excuse me. And the Planning Commission did a great job navigating this as well in such a short time. That's why they approved it five to zero as well. So, excuse me. Now we have a fully, do you mind if I snag one of those Kleenexes? Sorry, thank you. Apology. Yeah, there's a, now there's a fully approvable project before you today. I understand that today's decision is not technically about reviewing the project as a whole. It's one minor piece of the code that, you know, essentially is the question, did the appellant show that there's enough grounds for the board to take jurisdiction on the appeal? But as your staff concludes, they have not, and the record supports that conclusion. Despite that being the main topic at hand, I'd be remiss not to address a couple of the comments in the appeal. First, the appellant's claims on that there should be an alternative date that the housing element was certified on. Here are the facts. Very simple. The state says when the housing element is certified, not Mr. Reese. Additionally, the appellant conveniently refuses to admit that we did file another builder's remedy pre-application on March 6th, before their claim date of March 15th. We filed another on April 9th, and then finally, HCD certified the housing element. The letter says April 12th. All of those dates are before, of our submitted, were before the certification date. Doesn't matter if it's one month or one minute before, as long as our builder's remedy application was in during that timeframe. This is a qualified builder's remedy application. The appellant continues to argue that phone calls and emails are somehow constitute formal approval, and I think we can all admit that we wish it worked that way. It would be nice if we could get a building permit with a phone call, planning permit with an email. But we all know that's not how it works. It doesn't work for the state either. Housing elements are not approved via phone calls and emails. The staff in Planning Commission correctly relied on the only legally valid date, April 12th. That's the date that the state issued its certification letter. The appeal also raises health and safety concerns about the traffic on Gray Seal. However, this ignores the actual health and safety findings that are on the record. The safest access to the site, according to Planning, Fire, Public Works, professional traffic engineers, is Gray Seal. Project access from Capitola Road creates multiple conflict points and is less safe. So it's hard to reconcile the claim that this appeal is about safety when the appellant is advocating for the less safe option and dismissing the safety views conducted by the county and by professional experts. This means the Housing Accountability Act requires real, specific, unavoidable safety evidence on the record before the hearing in order to deny or adjust a project. This means it would have needed to show quantifiable demonstrable harm in a way that trained engineers and safety professionals can only show. It's not based on generalized fears or hypothetical scenarios, as the appellant states. No health and safety issues exist in the current plan because it does meet all objective health and safety standards in the current code. If one did want to change the access, one would not only need to prove that the new site access on the Capitola Road was safe, it'd also need to disprove the years of discussion on the matter. This is a very legally precarious path to choose, especially considering the fact that no new reports are allowed, nor can the project be conditioned in a manner that would require a new report. The decision of where the ballards go is just not subjective. It's the objectively best design option to access the site via Gray Seal Road. We, as a group, cannot legally accept anything else. On parking and traffic, the appeal tries to combine oil and water. More parking and less traffic. This is always a fun one for me with housing opponents. We think about it logically. More parking means more cars, which means more traffic. Less parking means less cars, which means less, less traffic. You cannot have more parking and less traffic at the same time. One may then claim that cars are now going to overrun the street neighborhood, make it more difficult for the current residents. Let's explore that a little bit here. In this particular case, Gray Seal Road is actually quite well parked with onsite private parking. There are 11 homes on Gray Seal Road. Those 11 homes have roughly 55 parking spaces for their private use. I'll say it again, 55 private parking spaces for 11 homes. Roughly, depending on the size of the car, of course. I don't know any other place that has five spots per unit. This project will not have an impact on the neighbor's ability to park in their homes or in their neighborhood. Will we take up some street parking with our residents? Sure. Isn't that what it's there for? They're public roads. They're meant to serve the public, not people that live solely on Gray Seal Road. So although, under density bonus law, the county can't actually require a parking study or deny the project based on generalized parking concerns, I think it's fair to say that even if one was performed, it wouldn't affect the outcome of this project. Gray Seal Road residents have plenty of parking, which brings me back to the point today. I had part of my speech dedicated to why the appeal doesn't raise sufficient evidence needed for the board to take this up to another hearing, but I really can't say it better than staff already did. I'll leave you with this, which is probably the most important takeaway. There's three things that'll happen if this project gets pulled to another hearing. First, it'll be, it'll result in the same project being improved, unless the board prefers to take on substantial legal risk as opposed to approval of this project. That costs hundreds of thousands of dollars, and from what I heard from other, the other meetings today, saving dollars is really important right now. So I'll reiterate that under the Housing Accountability Act, density bonus law, builder's remedy, the legal framework for a new hearing will be the same as it was for the last. Second, it'll just give the opponents false hope that something will change. It will give them the idea that a project will be adjusted, and yet there's no room for that without really substantial legal risk. Why give them false hope? Why not just rip the bandaid off? Let's get this done. The third and final thing another hearing would do is just delay 57 new homes. Our county only has a couple of projects, three, four of them, three or four are builder's remedy, and then the rest are affordable housing. Right? We've got very little coming up that's going to solve our arena numbers, and it's been two years. Let's get these projects done that are here. I, I do truly want to thank you all for your consideration. I know that it feels tough to be in a spot where you're forced to approve a project, especially when there's members of the public here that aren't happy about it. I've been in that spot, not as often as you all, but I do understand it. I do want to like, oh, lastly, stay that, you know, there's not a lot, probably a lot of housing advocates here today, but because in circumstances like this, it's an easy win. They shouldn't have to be here to say, do what the law says, approve this housing. So I hope that you'll think about that when you move with an action today. I'm here, happy to answer any further questions, and thank you so much for your time.
Uh, no, we're gonna open it up to, yes. Okay, four minutes and 30 seconds.
Thank you. Uh, two things, real fast. First, on the comment of March 6th, so when you submit a preliminary application for SB 330, you have 180 days to submit a full application in that vesting window to remain vested. So the fact that they submitted the March 6th SB 330 application, but did not submit a full application until October beyond the 180 days from March 6th means that application is withdrawn, moot. The only one that matters is April 9th. And that's the one that the county recognizes, that's the one that the applicant recognizes. So the reference to March 6th is interesting, put it that way. Uh, second, I want to reiterate that the memo from HCD, which was entered into the record on Friday, was not available when county or the developer wrote their response to this appeal. This is the new evidence that I'm referencing, one of the pieces of new evidence at least. The other is the workflow, um, as part of this appeal. They could not have responded to this prior to this hearing because it didn't exist until Friday, when it was added to the, uh, added to the record, so. Yeah, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll open it up to the public for any public comment on this item.
Hello, everyone. My name's Chris Demming. I live at 1751 Gray Seal Road, right next to where this building is going to be put. Dipping a toe, the first pancake, look before you leap, measure twice, cut once. There are so many of these similar expressions because of how important the idea is that they contain. They describe the caution and thoroughness to be used in first addressing a situation and the errors that inherently arise due to the unfamiliarity with a new process. Speaking of the holiday season, even good old Saint Nick checks the list twice. We are in uncharted territory right now. These density bonuses, builder remedy conditions, and there still remain quite a few questions from concerned neighbors that you've heard through today and heard through emails. And really just by the fact that this would be the first build of this height and this density in this community, I mean, indicates how new this legal process is and how careful we need to be going through it. So in a pool, if you don't dip a toe, you might jump in water that's a little bit too cold for your liking. If you only measure once, maybe you cut the board too short, you can get another board. And we all know how to deal with the first pancake. It's that we eat the first pancake. We give the second, third, the better product to the kids. But for this project, there's no reset, no redo, just a five-story pancake that we gotta deal with. Simply put, irreversible significant impact to the entire neighborhood, forever, forever. Okay, so for something that's impactful and this unprecedented, it means a lot to all of us, the whole neighborhood and probably a whole lot of the community. If you take another look at this, consider all this new evidence and then really take a good look for, um, for all of us. Thank you all for your time. Thank you for listening. Thank you all.
Hopefully you can hear me. Hi, I'm-
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Molly Braim. Chris is my partner. We both live in the house at the corner of 1751 Gray Seal Road and what will eventually pour into this place if it passes. I guess the main word that comes to my mind is permanent. We bought our house in 2023 and, excuse me, 2022. And it's like we pictured this being our house for the rest of our lives. This is going to be so permanent right next to us. It's going to shadow us, you know. I mean, there are a lot of reasons. I'm sure you'll get to all those later when you read through everything. We did a lot of canvassing, trying to get support for this and every single person we talked to said, we need more housing. We all agree on that. There's no dispute about that. We just want this to possibly be looked at again as much as possible. Every, you know, every rock unturned, anything that we can find to help make sure it's the best project that will satisfy the most people. And nobody we've talked to wants this. The only people who want this are Workbench. Of course, they're going to make a lot of money on it because they're not selling their units. And for something so permanent that you guys will never have to think about, probably in the future, you know, after a certain time, we will. We'll be living with this for the rest of our lives. It impacts the whole community. And so please, I urge you, take your time, think about this. I understand the pressure you're under. You have to follow the law. They're not great laws, but we just are begging you guys to please do what you can to think about it. Do what you can. Thank you.
I'm Ryan Sonataro. I live in the neighborhood. I'm not so close like some of the neighbors who are going to have a 60-foot-tall monolith with windows 10 feet from their property lines. But instead, I'm due east and so I'll forever lose my view of the sunset. I want to take, I really want this taking of the commons for corporate infall profits to be stopped. And fortunately, there's a clear path for Santa Cruz to do this without undue financial risk. One of your concerns has to do with the legal costs and potential fines and it seems to me that the new evidence takes care of those liability issues with the ultimate responsibility going to the state. They issue the letter, you have in hand what you need. All the county has to do then is file the letter of the law and any lawsuit against that action will be considered frivolous. We already know the state has acknowledged issuing the certification letter with the wrong date. They'll take care of the corrections. Workbench has used builder's remedy to maximize profits at the expense of the neighborhood. And this is not the first neighborhood. In Scotts Valley, the mayor actually said that they bulldozed the public process. Workbench's responses thinly veiled nimbyism. Workbench did a nice little presentation for us over Zoom and in that Zoom presentation, they taunted us neighbors by saying, hey, we could have made it six stories tall. You know, give me a break. You know, they tried to guilt trip us about affordable housing. Four units, four rent out of 57. No, I think the county has an obligation to deny Workbench's or builder's remedy. You certainly have an obligation to review it. And considering their way of doing business, losing this would be poetic justice.
Good morning and thank you for your service. I'm Karina McFarlane. I don't live on Gray Seal. Live around over one row of houses. I have two synchronicities I want to share and one was after we had the neighbor presentation by Workbench. Out on my bike, there's a free library on the street and I pull the Edifice complex. How power shapes our world. And in the cover, it says, "Both the impressively effective and the disastrously ill-conceived." So from our point of view, this one is disastrously ill-conceived. And my other synchronicity was I was on the East Coast in Nashville teaching and I was privy to a conversation where the locals were saying, this never used to happen. We're being like ride roughshod over our local ordinances by the state when our local ordinances, it's not nimbyism. It's to do with generational, intergenerational, what really works for equality of life and for children and just for lives and for families. And so they're the two synchronicities that I come with today. And there's, I've still got a minute. So I want to say, please consider the exculpatory evidence brought forward by the appellate. The planning commission, yeah, unanimous, but one of them said, I have to say that I can see the hand gesture that we're receiving here. And she didn't have to say what it was. We're being flipped off. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Patty Demming. I am the retired Assistant Superintendent of Business for Live Oak School District. I dedicated my life and career to serving families and children of Live Oak. And I believe that this project does the exact opposite. It does not serve Live Oak. Just about anyone you talk to in the neighborhood says it's way out of size. And there's certainly other arguable points of the building, but I think what's important for the board to consider right now is that there's actual legal justification for if not outright denying the project or changing its size, to take another look at it. Because it is, like people have already said, it's irreversible and I believe it'll do irreversible damage to that neighborhood. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone online?
Yes, Chair. Tim, your microphone's now available.
Great. Thank you so much. So interesting, all these comments. First of all, you know, what about my daughter? When she drives out onto San Jose-Socale Road and we have 50 to 100 extra cars on that road causing a traffic jam and she gets T-boned and killed? So there's a legal risk right there and destruction to our rural community from down there all the way up to the Summit Store. So it's sketch all around. And here's some facts. That's complex and it's quite a change. It's interesting to think about here, okay? There was an engineer, science guy, environmental guy over in this country called Tehran or Iran. Yeah, and we've heard about Tehran, right? And he warned the Iranian government and the religious clerics there and everything about the changing environmental situation and the aquifer. Well, they didn't listen to him and they threatened his life and he had to flee the country and all that sort of stuff. And today, they're talking about moving Tehran. Isn't that interesting? And not only that, think about Mexico City and think about Brazil and think about Tahoe and Santa Cruz and the aquifers. Think that there were 70,000 people in Reno when I was a boy and now there's 900,000 people. All those folks sucking that aquifer down. So how does it help the people of Santa Cruz to create this extra congestion to ruin our neighborhoods here and to put more toilet bowls and sinks on the aquifer? It makes no sense at all. You're just drawing the aquifer down. So when the next drought comes, it's much worse and when there's a fire, let alone the radios, our whole community will burn down because we have no water. So I say no way, no way. That's how I feel about it. I think all these politicians that are making these laws and coming after Santa Cruz and whatnot, they're out of their minds. Thank you very much. You take.
Mark, your microphone's now available.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Mark Wolf. I'm a land use lawyer. I've been working with the appellate Mr. Reese on this matter. I actually sent you all a letter back in November. Hopefully you had a chance to read it or find it in your packets. I just want to make a very quick legal point followed by a policy point. The legal point is that there's nothing in the housing element law that dictates a specific form for HCD to find a housing element in substantial compliance. If you look at Government Code Section 65589.55A, it says that for a purpose of a local agency's approval or disapproval of a housing development project pursuant to the builder's remedy, a housing element shall be considered in substantial compliance with this article only if the element or amendment was in substantial compliance as determined by the department or a court of competent jurisdiction when a preliminary application was submitted. Note, it uses the word determined. It doesn't use the word certified. Doesn't use the phrase send a letter. It uses simply the word determined. And I think as Mr. Reese has demonstrated, the record here shows that HCD determined that your housing element was in substantial compliance in March. The element that you had adopted in February, or adopted amendments in February, was in full compliance at that time before the preliminary application was submitted. On the policy notes, it just seems to me that you all would want to defend your planning and zoning regime and that you would not want to relinquish the authority to enforce that lightly. Your staff did everything they were supposed to do here. The builder's remedy is intended to penalize recalcitrant, uncooperative agencies, which you are not. It seems at the very least you should take jurisdiction over this appeal to get to the bottom of this. Thank you.
Are there any further speakers? We have no further speakers online. Okay, bringing it back to the board, I'll call on Supervisor Cunnings.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'll start by saying that just from philosophically, I agree with the appellant's argument that the punishment does not fit the offense here, that we were an agency or a jurisdiction who was substantially doing everything possible to comply with state law. I mean, I was part of the board that voted to approve our housing element in November of 2023, well before it was due with HCD. And, you know, it was largely due to internal discussions and their administrative process that we were pushed into this remedy of period of noncompliance. And so it just, it doesn't feel like we had created a situation that needed a remedy when we were doing everything we could to comply with state law. Now, the details and nuances of that argument, I think, are something that we could work through in an actual de novo hearing rather than just this jurisdictional hearing on deciding whether or not to move forward. I think, you know, the other thing is from a, just from a process perspective and looking at some of the bases that we could claim to take jurisdiction, I have real concerns that the planning commission made the decision to approve this project despite the fact that they did not have all the information they were seeking. So if you look at the record of the planning commission, each of the five commissioners either asked questions of staff or sought guidance from council on how to deny or condition this project, but they either did not receive substantive guidance on how to reach that end or did not have their questions answered adequately. And so the right thing to do in that situation would have been to simply continue the hearing to another meeting of the planning commission until they were able to get the information they sought. But instead, they approved the project and I believe that they actually erred in doing so. You know, also specifically in issues that have come up repeatedly, four points, the access driveway, the amount of parking, the number of affordable units and the presence of storage spaces, which will potentially be converted to ADUs, are all specific to the project that commissioners asked about and didn't receive adequate answers about. So for that reason, I would like to move that the board take jurisdiction under San Marcos County Code 1810340C5 on the basis that the planning commission made an error, which renders the planning commission's determination inappropriate to the extent that a further hearing before the board is necessary. And I move that the board direct staff to schedule a de novo public hearing on the board's calendar within 60 days and that at the hearing, staff be prepared to address possible alternatives for providing access to the development from Capitola Road rather than Gray Seal Road. One second. And just one last comment. I have to agree that given this is not the first builder's remedy project that's likely to come before us, there's another application making its way to the planning commission at 3500 Paul Sweet Road. I think it's incumbent upon us to make a list and check it twice, as remember the audience pointed out. Thanks.
So before we take roll calls, let's see if anybody else wants to have questions or comments. Okay, Madam Clerk?
You're on the line again.
That's the second time, sorry.
It's okay. Yeah, and I just do want to express some concern over how, you know, builder's remedy was applied in this instance. The appellant seems to bring some compelling evidence that would suggest that builder's remedy would not be appropriate for this kind of project. And so I will likely have questions on that. And I do just want to say too, being brief, that while there is threat of litigation, you know, while the applicant has, you know, suggested potential lawsuits, I do want to also remind us that there was a similar project, same applicant in the city of Santa Cruz, the Food Bin project, where some of the things that they proposed around the additional space will be converted in the future was heard in court and the courts did side with the city, who said that that was an inappropriate use. And so I do think that there's much more that needs to be explored and discussed around the project. Also, when we submit our housing element, part of the direction that I provided and that we agreed on was that we were going to require the 15% inclusionary in rental housing units. That is not the case in this project. And then lastly, I guess, not so much with this, it's somewhat related to this project, but, you know, while we do need more housing, let me just, you know, express that in Santa Cruz, the market rate units for rental housing that we're getting, 425 square foot studios are going for $3,100 a month. 700-plus-square-foot one bedrooms are going for $4,100 a month. There are very few people in this community that can afford that kind of housing. And so when we're thinking about the housing we need for our neighborhoods, we need to have the housing that's going to be the best fit for our community. And so to those who are in the audience who are frustrated with, you know, the state housing laws, I highly suggest reaching out to your state representatives and meeting with them and expressing to them the frustration with these new requirements that really make it challenging for us to, you know, hold developers accountable for the housing that we need for our communities. And with that, I'll end my comments and, yeah, thank you for your time.
Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you. I have a question for counsel regarding if we take jurisdiction over the application and do we hear the full permit application again or is it just on the basis of the appeal? What do we hear?
Just de novo, you hear the entire application again.
And so is there an opportunity that the developer may make changes to the project between now and then or it will be the exact project as originally applied?
Sorry, my mic went off. As of right now, you're going to hear what the developer has presented and you're going to get an opportunity to ask the developer whether it's possible, you know, that the developer would be willing to make changes here or there. I'm not sure which exact changes you would be asking for, but I don't have any anticipation that the developer will be making changes to the project within the 60 days before you're going to hear the de novo project appeal, if your board chooses to go that direction.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Supervisor De Serafa?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Cunnings?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So the board will now recess for closed session. Counsel, is there anything reportable from today's closed session?
I hope not.
Okay.
Don't expect there to be.
We will be returning at 1:30 for a scheduled item for our CEO, Carlos Palacios. So we have a room?
Recording stopped.
Madam Clerk, are you ready?
Yes, we are.
We're now recording the 1:30 session. Item number 10. We'll now move to our 1:30 time certain item to consider authorizing issuance of a proclamation honoring former county executive officer Carlos Palacios to be signed by members of the board. Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors proclamation honoring Carlos Palacios on the occasion of his retirement. Whereas Carlos Palacios has faithfully served the residents of Santa Cruz County with distinction as county CEO since 2017, bringing with him decades of experience in public service, including 20 years as city manager of Watsonville. During his tenure, Carlos guided the county through unprecedented challenges, including COVID-19 pandemic, CZU complex lightning fires, the 2023 floodstorms, demonstrating steadfast leadership, sound judgment, and tireless commitment to the health and safety of our community. Carlos laid the foundation for long-term resilience by creating the Office of Response Recovery and Resilience, OR3, and prioritizing climate preparedness and county planning, while also tackling longstanding systemic challenges that others deferred. Carlos strengthened the county governance by implementing the county's first ever strategic plan, introducing continuous process improvement strategies, and establishing an online operational plan dashboard to ensure transparent, efficient, and results-focused government. Carlos made equity and inclusion a hallmark of his leadership, expanding access to services in Watsonville and the surrounding areas through an establishment of the South County Government Center, so that the historically underserved communities would no longer face barriers to representation and resources. Carlos played a key role in securing and advancing funding for the Pajaro Levy project, a long-delayed endeavor to rebuild existing levees, construct setback levees and flood walls, reduce flood risk, improve habitat and bolster groundwater recharge, protecting future generations and ensuring resiliency for the Pajaro Valley in the face of climate change and extreme weather. Carlos was instrumental in rescuing the Watsonville Community Hospital from bankruptcy, safeguarding access to vital healthcare services for the people of Pajaro Valley, and also pushed to expand the county health and behavioral health services, including the construction of the Hope Forward Avellante Youth Crisis Center. Under his leadership, the county received accolades for innovation, good government, including the California State Association of Townies Merit Award. While Carlos gained recognition across the state as a pragmatic and effective leader whose work improved the standing of Santa Cruz County, he has also championed the long-term investments in sustainability, housing, transportation, and installing solar on our county facilities and properties, creating the county's climate action and adaptation plan, securing the largest grant in California Transportation Commission history to build the coastal rail trail, and also serving as a founding board member of the Central Coast Energy to advance to a 100% renewable energy future. Beyond his accomplishments, Mr. Palacios is admired for his integrity, humility, steady guidance, and collaborative spirit, and steadfast commitment to the well-being of the entire community. Now, therefore, the members of the Santa Cruz Board of Supervisors hereby commend and thank Carlos Palacios for his exceptional leadership, dedication, and service, and extend their best wishes for a long and fulfilling retirement. Congratulations, Carlos. Can you share with us a few words before written in the public?
So this is my chance at public comment, huh?
Two minutes, you got two minutes.
And I no longer work for you either, so. Anyway, it's, uh, I'm very honored by this proclamation. For 30 years, I've been seeing other people get proclamation, and finally, it's my turn. It's amazing. And I, in the audience, I see two former mayors here. And actually, three. Well, city councilman, were you a mayor, Ramon? No. Council members and mayors here, and I see Harris here as well. County Office of Education. It's a great honor for you folks to be here. And I want to just thank the board, the years you gave me to work for you, and all the things that we did together. Because of course, all those accomplishments were a team effort, and we did them together. Each of you is integral in all of those achievements. And I gave you great praise and honor, and of course, all the staff from the county. You have a very dedicated, amazing group of people who work really, really hard. All of them, I want to thank as well. And then, I also want to thank my wife. I didn't want to forget, like I did the other night, mentioning Martha, who's been an amazing partner all these years as well. Because as you know, it's a family effort as well. So thank you. It's been a great honor working for you. And I will certainly won't be watching the board meetings, but I'll be cheering you on in any event, if you're due today. Thank you so much.
We want to present this proclamation right now with the board before we have public comment. A quick photo off, would you guys join me up there? I'd like to invite any, um...
Chair, Chair Hernandez, myself and county council would like to say something before you turn it to public comment, if okay with you.
Perfect, yes.
So I had the opportunity on Sunday evening to congratulate Carlos and recognize him for all that he's done for the county of Santa Cruz. And since many of the public and others weren't, probably weren't able to be there, I just wanted to note what he, some of the things he's done and just how much he's meant to us and what he's taught us. So he's, his accomplishments are vast, as I mentioned on Sunday. But they include everything from saving Watsonville Community Hospital and returning it to public ownership, like has been mentioned in the proclamation, bringing more equitable service to Watsonville and surrounding areas with the South County Government Center. Something very meaningful to him is establishing the Youth Crisis Center in Mid-County for youth with a mental health crisis. He's managed so many emergencies, it's almost countless at this point. Hopefully, that changes under me. I really want no emergencies, although I know that's a big thing to ask. And importantly, he's taken time to invest in staff. He did that a lot with me and Elisa, our executive team. But moreover, the whole CEO office, I can't tell you the number of times he would sit down in our staff soiree and tell staff, teach them about something he experienced, his thought process of what he went through and trying to address the issue, the alternatives he was thinking about, and the eventual solution and recommendation he came up with. It was really, you don't get that kind of experience in many jobs. And it was a window into really someone who's led such a long, accomplished career. And we're very grateful for you, Carlos, and everything you did for us as staff. And that extends to the greater county family through our leadership program, Results Count, and everything you supported. All of that knowledge and all of those skills and all of those leadership qualities are going to go on for many years to come, and we're just very grateful for you.
Carlos, I just, I want to pick up on that theme. You know, we could, we could be here for hours talking about your accomplishments and, and... But I really just want to thank you for being you. You, Carlos, have had a profound impact on so many of us in this room. Speaking personally, I, I don't think I've ever worked with a more transformational leader than you. Somebody who has a vision to help the community and to help a board of supervisors or a council move the needle. Your abilities, everything you bring together, humility, your ethical character, your spirit of collaboration is just unmatched. It's unmatched in my, in my personal experience. And I'm just going to miss you dearly, and thank you again. Thank you for being you.
Thank you. I want to invite up any elected officials or their representatives, speak on behalf of elected officials, and speak next. And if you have proclamations, this is the time to come up here. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors and staff. My name is Ferris Sabah, and I serve as your County Superintendent of Schools, and it's my honor to be here to speak on behalf of myself and also the Santa Cruz County Board of Education and the County Office of Education, and share our deep appreciation for County CEO Carlos Palacios's legacy of leadership. I don't have to tell you that Carlos has dedicated decades on behalf of our, of our community in Santa Cruz County. He was the first Latane County Executive Officer, and in that time, he has advanced equity and access for our community in so many different ways. From responding to COVID-19, to the CZU fires, to severe winter storms and flooding, he strengthened in coordination with the schools, and that partnership helps students and families stay connected to learning, safety, and vital supports. He expanded behavioral health services for youth, including mobile crisis teams, focus intervention teams, and as, as you mentioned, the Children's Crisis Stabilization Center. He's also brought services to South County, ensuring that government services and housing services are available. He saved Watsonville Community Hospital and made it a community hospital again. His leadership on climate action, clean energy, and active transportation will benefit students and our youth and our families for generations. Carlos, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your service. You are and always will be a champion of our community with, with quiet, resolute, selfless leadership. You have epitomized collaboration and a can-do-ness that was unstoppable. On behalf of the County Office of Education, the County Board of Education, and our entire school community, I extend our deep gratitude to, for your collaborative, values-based leadership. I'd like to wish you and your family well as you embark on this next chapter, and I'm honored to present to you this resolution from the County Board of Education recognizing your countless contributions to our community.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors and Carlos Palacios. My name is Emmanuel Garcia, and I'm here on behalf of Congressman Jimmy Panetta and Congresswoman Representative Lofgren, who could not be with us today as they're back in Washington, but they both asked me if I could be here to present this congressional resolution to Carlos Palacios. Carlos Palacios has done so much for our community and has been there through rather troubling times. I know, because we worked in the same building, and we often had to collaborate on assisting constituents. I would get referrals from the county, and then I would send, you know, people his way that needed assistance with county resources. On a personal note, I want to say that thank you for always being there for Congressman Panetta's office. I often gave you very little notice, or no notice at all. I was just outside your office sometimes, and I would just plant questions on him or ask him for assistance, and he was always there. That is rare in government, I can tell you that much. Thank you so much for leading by example. Thank you so much for always being available for us, and thank you for always putting the community at the forefront.
Good afternoon, I'm Kalida, and I'm here on behalf of Speaker Rivas, Assemblymembers Paleran and Addis, and Senator John Lard, and we also wanted to extend our gratitude, Carlos, for your many years of service to our community. I know the county will miss you very much, and we wanted to wish you the best in your next chapter and retirement.
And if we can have any other public comment from family, friends, staff, anyone else, please speak, walk up to the podium.
Members of the board, my name is Jamie Goldstein, City Manager here in Capitola. So welcome everyone to Capitola. I, this is a strange spot for me to be standing at a council meeting. I usually have a seat over there, so this feels a little bit different, and in addition, I'm doing something that we often chide members of the public to not do, which is to direct our comments to the audience, but because this is about you, Carlos, I am, I'm doing so. I've had the pleasure of working with you for many years, both in Watsonville and in the county. You know, some of the things that I'm really proud of our accomplishments together include the formation of 3CE. It wouldn't have happened without your leadership and the dedicated effort that we put in together and that you really took to Monterey, to bring Monterey along and get them to be members. I know a lot of people don't know that, but we worked very, very hard, and you worked very, very hard to bring along and get Form 3CE, which is going to be a lasting, lasting real accomplishment for the entire Central Coast. We've also had the pleasure of working together to rebuild all of our libraries in the region, to providing regional dispatch together. We've also just, I think this morning, the Board of Supervisors approved the Ring Agreement, which is a major step forward in our regional public safety system. So there's been so many things that you've done regionally that I think are really lasting impressions and are forming institutions that'll benefit future generations. The other thing you've done, which is something that I think that a lot of people may or may not realize, but you have really fostered and grown the relationship between the cities and the county. In many places of the state, the relationships between the counties and the cities can be antagonistic, and you've done an amazing job of sort of fostering and bringing the cities along and growing that relationship and the trust that's associated with it. So for that, I really commend you. I want to wish you well in your retirement. I also on a personal level, I want to say thank you for recommending hiring me back when I was interviewed, I think sixteen or seventeen years ago from the City Manager of Capitola. He was on the interview panel. I presume he recommended me, I guess. Maybe it was just someone else. So I want to thank you for that as well. Congratulations.
My name is Dwayne Woods, with Central Coast Community Energy, representing them. We wanted to come forward and recognize Carlos. You've spoken about earlier about leadership. Many people have titles, very few people really bring leadership to the table, and the formation of the Central Coast Community Energy showed leadership and vision from Carlos. He was a force to be reckoned with. At that time, I was working for Monterey County, so he was the force I was reckoning with, and when he came forward, the vision that they had, this county, Santa Cruz County, brought that vision forward, and then they made this organization out of sure will and determination and formed that, and now we're a five-county region, providing benefits to the community of all five counties. Over $5.8 million of investment just in Santa Cruz County, back to Santa Cruz County. That would not have happened if it wasn't for Carlos, so our organization now really wants to say, "Thank you, Carlos. Thank you for your vision, thank you for your leadership, and you will be missed." With that, I want to provide him with a small token from our organization to Carlos, so he'll never forget us.
Show it off, show it off.
Carlos, my name is Antonio Rivas, one of the city council members, along, here we go. First time, you know, when I first got elected to city council in 2001, I knew Ramon was there too, and at the same time, he was an assistant manager, I believe so, and we had the pleasure to hire him as our senior manager. It was so great, it was a great choice that we did. Of those things, you know, one thing that really bring me with a lot of memories that we did in my eight years in the city council, one of the things that we did that he was very, very, very well done is the building of the city plaza. Were able to be able to have our own library, the courts, and our civic center. It was hard in the parking lot, a five-story parking lot. It took us a lot, a lot of negotiations, but the main thing that we really stuck to me is that the problems that we had with the courts, how to get that funding, but we did negotiate, and Carlos was there to be able to make that decision and be able, the courts, the judges mainly, to put some of the money to build that, to the center. And that was great. It was very negotiated, and it was a pleasure, and which, you know, I never knew, I thought I was the mayor, I was the vice mayor at that time, and be able to complete that, that, you know, that project. And you can see, Carlos Palacios was our CEO, he was great in doing those negotiations. It was hard, it was not easy, but he did it. We all did it together to be able to make sure. The other thing that we'd be able to do is under, get the funding. The two bridges, you know, in a hole-in, a way, those two bridges always get flooded and flooded, and finally, we'd be able to get that money to build those two bridges. Now, it doesn't get flooded anymore. The other thing that did I remember too is that the development of the hole-in, development of the housing, it was great. And the other one, it was great that we able to continue is that with the negotiation, be able to buy the land, was the Mona Lisa project behind, whether, so that was very hard to deal, so we can be able to provide a park and recreation center there, along with some homes for our farm workers' families that we're building in trailers. So we bought the land, here is Carlos Palacios, be able to negotiate that, so we can be able to have, you know, for our farm workers there. And continue on and on, too. The development of the streets are much better, and something that I will never forget is, of course, to keep our Watsonville Community Hospital, it's a community hospital here, and I know, I know a lot of people here were part of it, but Carlos was there to make sure that we get our community hospital, the Watsonville Community Hospital now. And it's going to be on and on that I can be with stories that we went to Sacramento and tried to get funding here and there, traveling, but always Carlos will say, "We'll negotiate", and we'll be able to support them, support him, and at the same time, our Watsonville is really a better town, a better housing, and the floods, all of the, everything else that he did, he was there because he cares for our community, he loves our community. And now the head CEO retired from the county, Santa Cruz County, he continued to support our South County, he continued to do that, and now that we have a South County office over there in the county, that's great for us, for our services that we be able to provide to our, to our community. And all I can say, Carlos, it was a very, it's an honor to be able to be in the city council, and all the things that you did, I'm very proud of you. I think the community at the city of Watsonville is very proud of you, of what you did, and in our city. So I thank you, and hopefully you, now you can be able to rest, to get easy, but I know you're going to get involved in different ways, but now it's time to rest and take care of yourself and your family.
So when I was getting ready to buy my house in Watsonville, my realtor pointed across the street and he said, "That's where the city manager, Carlos Palacios, lives. You'll never have a pothole on your street." And that's true, we never have had a pothole on our street. I want to reiterate some of the things we've heard about Carlos, because leadership is about this big thing, and we think we have these images of what leaders look like, and it's not about what they look like, it's about what they do. So here's the things Carlos did. First off, he always shared his vision, and that vision was big, right? That vision was about including everybody, even the most vulnerable, people in our community who had no voice. He always made sure that their voices got elevated some way. He always supported his team. As Nicole said, he helped train us, he mentored us, he encouraged us to take classes, to learn new things, to interact with one another, to collaborate with one another, so we could understand each other's viewpoints. He broke down silos in departments that were years in the making, but his vision and his ability and his leadership helped us become better collaborators. He was always open to new ideas, always asking and listening for what others had to say. Now, that's not to say, when he made a decision, he made a decision, and that's something about leaders that we don't always acknowledge, that they're willing to take the responsibility for the decisions they make, and that was also something Carlos always did, was accept the responsibility for the decisions that he made. And sometimes he accepted the responsibility for decisions other people made that weren't so great, but he was a leader in that regard. He was always respectful, always respectful. Carlos elevated civility in our office, in our culture, in everything he did. He always was very respectful, and he loved his job. It was funny to hear his story at the party the other night about his niece, but it's true, he loved his job even when it was frustrating, and he really made us love our work as well. So Carlos, thank you for your many, many years of service, and I look forward to just having you as a neighbor now.
Anyway, Carlos, you were able to get things done. Anytime he was leading the project, he did it, and most of us were just following him. There were projects that cost too much money, and the county didn't have the budget to cover it. All of a sudden, we were getting money from the federal government, we're getting money from the state government, we're getting money from the city councils, and we were getting money from Monterey County even, to get projects done. So I don't know how he did that, but he did it, and I want to thank you for all the years from the city council in Watsonville and from the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors. It was a pleasure working with Carlos, and he did it all.
I'm Marcus Pimentel, lifelong resident in Watsonville. Had the pleasure to work with Carlos twice in my career, and I want to, I'm closer to retirement than I like to think I am. I mean, it's still, I still have a good generation, a decade ahead of me, but I can see that window, and so I like to say I can be a little honest today, tell you the other things you haven't heard about Carlos. It's all true. This was my first job in this city, 1996, I interviewed here, this was my first job. I went to work for Carlos ten years later in 2006. I thought I knew what local government service was. He showed me what it really meant. Not, this is off the cuff. When I showed up in 2006, after he proactively recruited me and convinced me to come to Watsonville, work in my hometown, and I was always fearful of working in my hometown because... work in my hometown, and I was always fearful of working in my hometown because I had a lot of family there who had opinions about local government, strong opinions about local government. So I was always hesitant to work in Watsonville for that reason. And right out the gate, we were challenged in so many different ways, just like Watsonville is. And he led as a leader, behind the scenes, the same as he led publicly, in front of the scenes, with the community. Values, service, commitment. And he challenged everybody, whether it was department heads or staff meetings or meetings with the unions. We were undermanned, we were out-resourced. It reminded me a little bit of a Giants thing where everybody used to complain about the old Candlestick Park and it was cold and windy and nobody wanted to play there and, and they came in and said, "Suck it up." Turned into an advantage and Carlos basically did the same thing to all of us and said, "We're here to serve our community and that's gotta come first." And he challenged us all. I thought I knew what service was, I came from immigrants who always volunteered and did things. And he showed me what real service meant and how to really make use of your time and he challenged everybody to get involved in the community, to get involved and do things. And when Salud, behind the scenes, way back in 2005, had some issues, right Laura Bowers? Right, he did? When Salud had some issues, Carl didn't stay back and say, "That's a nonprofit in my community." He said, "This is a service part of our, in our community, what can my city do to help them?" And he led that recovery that turned them into who they are now. I just wanna reiterate, the man you see before you is a hero and a mentor to me and he, I don't know if I ever use those words directly, 'cause I've always been intimidated sometimes to say that. But everybody watches and learns from you. And even when you're sad and we're watching and learning from you. And I'm just, and I know there's thousands of us out there, we're better because of you. And so I just wanna thank you on behalf of everybody in the community for everything you've done and everything you're gonna continue to do. And I really, really hope you succeed at retirement and do something you wanna do versus being forced into doing other things. So just thank you, Carlos, for everything you've done.
He's gonna start that rock band with the sun. It's gonna be the lead singer.
Good afternoon, board Elizabeth Padilla, just wanted to say congratulations, Carlos, on your retirement. I've also had the privilege and the honor of working for Carlos, both at the city of Watsonville and at the county of Santa Cruz. So your leadership, your guidance, your genuine friendship has not only shaped the work that we do, but who we are as people and I truly appreciate you. You've always led with integrity, clarity and heart. You pushed us to grow, supported us when things got difficult and always were there for advice. So working for you has been just one of the greatest privileges of my life. I wanna say, I truly respect you and I wish you and Martha all the best in this next chapter. Congratulations, I hope you guys travel a lot, God knows you deserve it, and I wish you all the best.
There's anyone else, was there anyone online?
Chair, we do have a speaker online. Tammy, your microphone's now available.
Thank you, Tammy Weigel, ISD Director for the County of Santa Cruz. Carlos, unfortunately I could not be there today to speak in person. I was working on your, your other favorite project, which is the new AV upgrades for the board chambers. But I do wanna say, I really appreciate your support over the years for the Information Services Department. And if you speak to any of my peers across the state of California, that is a rare thing. So your collaborative actions with supporting us and helping us to support the community and also just raising that, how IT really does need to be a resident-facing support organization has really helped me and my employees really align our work. Congratulations on your retirement and you will be missed.
I see no further speakers online, Chair.
Thank you. With that, we'll bring you back to the board, Supervisor DeSerpas.
Thank you. I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. You've done so much for our community. The collaboration that you forged with the school districts, with the cities, with the county, with, as a new supervisor coming in, you've been lovely to work with, always respectful, calm, tranquil, civil. You provided a huge degree of, you're, you're like somebody that we could look up to and we really appreciate everything that you've done, Carlos. So on behalf of District Two, I just wanna say thank you. We're gonna really miss you.
Supervisor Cummings?
Yeah, well, this is my second term in office and each time we either lost our city manager or CAO, so, you know, once you're getting used to working with somebody, they take off, but can totally understand why, 30 years of dedication and commitment to this community. I mean, it's, it's something we don't really hear about that much anymore in terms of, you know, people's commitments to jobs. Some people will come in for a few years and take off and go to other things, but, you know, your commitment to public service and not just public service, but specifically to this community, really is reflective in a lot of the accomplishments that you were able to achieve that, to be quite honest, you know, it's, it's really, you set the bar really high. I mean, there's a lot of folks that probably would wanna try to accomplish one of these things, like, you know, with creating a hospital or some of the other major achievements, you know, creating 3CE, which is really bringing together a lot of different jurisdictions and convincing them that joining this, this type of organization is worthwhile. All of that, you know, on top of, you know, what you need to do on a daily basis as a county administrative officer, making sure that our county functions properly. And so it's just been really impressive to, to watch and to hear about all of your achievements and really just, you know, makes myself really appreciate the fact you are retiring so you can have some time to rest after doing all this work and providing so much support to your community. And, you know, I just wanna say that it, these are like the tangible things that we see, but there's so much that goes on that people never hear about in terms of the different fires that pop up that we need to put out. And just the calmness that you've been able to, you know, approach challenging situations and really stand up for the community, I think is really admirable. And so, look forward to hopefully getting more texts of your, your son's music and other texts about things that are going on in the world, but really hope you can enjoy your years of retirement and, and yeah, our community is very appreciative of all, everything that you've done. So on behalf of the third district, just wanna wish you well. Oh, and I will say the one thing that wasn't, one of the things that wasn't mentioned is just the work that you've done to create a division on homelessness, which I know prior to you coming to the Board of Supervisors, it didn't exist and people have been saying for years it's something that they've wanted. So just your commitment to supporting those experiencing poverty and really trying to meet the needs of everyone is something that, that we will not be, will not be forgotten as we move forward. So thank you for everything and I look forward to seeing you around.
Thank you, Supervisor Cummings. Don't forget the podcasts, text us the podcasts. Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you. Carlos, I'm just, I'm really appreciating this moment when we get to lift up your legacy. This is a really important milestone for you, for our community, for our county, because it's, because your impact has been transformational. And all of the various projects we've heard about leave a foundation that we're all going to continue to build off of. And so, of the things I get, I get to do in this job so far, having these moments to recognize people who have given their life to public service and have left such an important impact, these are my favorite moments. And working with you has been such a pleasure and a privilege. So I just wanna say thank you for everything that you've given to each one of us. And on behalf of the fifth district, we're so appreciative and wishing you well in your retirement.
Supervisor Coen?
Thank you, Chair. Well, one of the things I've learned the hard way in my own life is that you can absolutely have the right idea at the wrong time. And what I've learned from you, Carlos, is the answer to that is persistence. And if you just keep at it for 30 years, eventually the world will catch up with you. But seriously, I'm, I'm so glad that our county finally caught up to your vision and really, in many ways, our whole country. Because I think the, the reward for all of these disasters that you guided our community through was this opportunity for transformation. And of course, right in the middle of these difficult times, I mean, one of the crises that you helped our community through was the Black Lives Matter movement, right? That came out of the George Floyd murder. And, I mean, I think that really introduced for our entire country this, these ideas of diversity, equity and inclusion, which of course you've committed your entire career to, but that finally brought the country and even our county in a, in a much more committed way up to the ideals that you have always held. And look at the result of that being, I mean, you were truly the man for the moment, the right CEO, CAO for the time. And, I mean, you've had this, this hat trick, right? I mean, the Paharo River Levy, the saving the hospital, and, what? South County Government Center, thanks, of course. I mean, these are just like three incredible wins and of course there's also much more on top of that, but, I mean, holistic public defense, Housing for Health Division, you brought so much into being so quickly really in these last few years because it was finally the right time. And I'm just so, so grateful that you had you as a leader during these years and the, again, the reward of having you as a leader through these, through these crises that you have really helped to write the playbook. And, you know, unfortunately the trend looks like we're, we're not gonna have a shortage of crises going forward, we're certainly gonna have more to face, but we have that playbook that, that you've written for us and I'm sure that we'll be responding to those crises in a way that is more inclusive and more equitable because of your leadership. Thank you.
So Carlos, you know, I've known Carlos for a long time, since about 98, I think it was. I went in there to the city asking for a three-month internship. Ended up there just over two years. During a two-year internship, there was a paid internship while I was a student at UC Santa Cruz. You know, reflecting back, I, I look at the, you know, the places he put me, he put me in community development, which is where I wanted to go, and neighborhood services the first year. And I got to learn a lot with our, our planning director that we had there, Martin, Martin? I already forgot his last name. Anyways, and then the second year, he brought me up to the city manager's office and working on an outside project with Action Paharo Valley. And I got to see him work during that time and really, there's no one else that can negotiate with so many differing parties and bring them all together like Carlos could. And he continues to do that today. So I just wanna thank him, you know, because he put me through a breadth of knowledge to learn that really prepared me and gave me the tools to become a council member, to become a mayor, to become a supervisor. So I really give you, you know, tons of gratitude and thanks for mentoring me. And, you know, to this day, it's something that Carlos still continues to do. A few of our supervisors had the opportunity to talk to Carlos and they asked about internship opportunities and sure enough, he gave him, Carlos gave them his number to call and they had internships. He still continues to bring in young people so that they can learn, be leaders. And I really wanna thank Carlos for that. You know, it was exciting during the time that we were in the city. Well, there's ups and downs, that 2009 economic downturn was tough for us, but with Carlos, we survived and we thrived. Right before he left, we began the process to start thriving again at the city of Watsonville. But it was fun, some of the things that we worked on, you know, we opened the can of worms of doing a petition for the first Starbucks in Watsonville. Now we're working on a petition to keep them out. They got like eight of them already. One of the big ones was PV High. We fought nearly everyone to get that third high school. People from amongst our own school district, people from, from the Coastal Commission and LAVCO, everyone, you know, was opposed to this project, but we made it happen. It was an unsurmountable mountain that we climbed. You know, the low need development that brought over 600 homes to our community, that is something that, you know, only Carlos could have accomplished that because it was literally tension-filled to get that done with other parties that were, that had a difference of opinion. But like I said, no one else can compromise and bring people together with a plan like Carlos could. And again, I think without your mentoring, without your help, I wouldn't have been the planning commissioner, the council member, the mayor, the supervisor that I am today. So I wanna thank you so much for everything that you've done for Watsonville, the county, and of course for me too as well. In 2015, or the end of 2015, 2016, I was sad when Carlos left to the county, but I know he was gonna go on and grow. That's when he joined the county, of course, and he became the first Latino executive officer in 168 years here in Santa Cruz County. So thank you so much, Carlos, for your vision, your integrity and your extraordinary service that you do in the community. We wish you deep joy and a well-earned rest in your retirement and that rock band too. Carlos, before we leave, could we take one more picture with the electeds and our board and all your frames and trophies you got there?
Don't forget to take the official motion and action.
Before we forget, I'll, I'll move approval of the resolution.
Second.
We'll do a roll call then and then we'll do the picture.
For the record, Chair, would you clarify the seconder?
Supervisor Koenig was the, the motion and Supervisor Martinez was the second.
Thank you. Supervisor DeSerpas?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
You remember that petition for Starbucks, we had like 5,000 people on paper? Now we're trying to keep them out. Yeah, people on the right side. Yeah, people on the right side.
This meeting is adjourned. 2:29.
I was, yes.